I can't find something on my computer. That's fine, we'll just move on. I'm going to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all join us.
The United States, America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Well, I know the agenda, I think because it's a special meeting, the agenda is set, right, we can't modify it?
That's correct.
Because I just, I did want to acknowledge though, there had been some back and forth. I thought we were going to have on the agenda a discussion about holding in-person meetings, just as a way to address.
So, we're not able to discuss it tonight. And by the time, it was too late to change, make any changes to this meeting's agenda, because it's a special meeting, as you indicated. So that will be on a future agenda.
It will be, and I appreciate that. And I just wanted to acknowledge that openly, so people were aware that it was a discussion or intention, at least on some board members' part, to have that. But thank you.
Okay, communications.
I don't think we voted on the agenda. Do we need to do that?
Yes, we did, sorry. All in favor?
We did vote. I had unanimous.
Great. Communications.
I must have fallen asleep for that vote, I guess.
Did you have something you wanted to say, Sharon, though?
No, no, go ahead.
All right. I only have one communication. We, the board received a communication from Sharon Kirsch. She provided some input on all of her concerns about the reopening. I thought the communication was very well-written and clear, and expressed some legitimate concerns. I have not spoken with Ms. Kirsch yet. I plan to give her a call before the end of the week, for sure. A lot of the things she references in her communication talk about studies I haven't seen, and, you know, certainly talk about things that I don't, you know, feel qualified to talk about when we're talking about COVID and R O values and different things in it. But I will speak with Ms. Kirsch. I will address her concerns, and then to the extent that necessary, I'll put her in touch with the experts, primarily at Chatham Health District, who might be able to, you know, talk to her more, you know, with a greater level of expertise than I possess about some of her concerns. But I thought that the communication was very well-done, and certainly reflects the concerns that a lot of us have. So I'm going to be following up with Ms. Kirsch on that, and I will put her in touch with the experts necessary to address her questions that are of more of a medical nature, science nature, that I wouldn't be able to address. Beyond that, I have no other communications.
Okay. Reopening plan.
Okay. Here we go. So, let's start with an update on the number. So I did post on the website, the data from July 27th from our Chatham Health District. There were 666 COVID tests in the town of Portland so far, to date in July. That's a one, there was a 1.1% positive rate. So I did the math on that. There were six positive tests in Portland. And in the entire Chatham Health District, there were 3,958 tests. There were 0.5% of those came back positive. So, this morning in our reopening committee, I did speak with Liz Davidson, who is our representative from the Chatham Health District. She didn't have some exact details on, you know, the contact tracing, or where those tests, or who those individuals were. Certainly, because of HIPAA, we wouldn't know. But Liz did indicate, as the Chatham Health District reflects in this communication, that that number is below 1% and considered low. So again, good job, Connecticut. Please keep wearing your masks, and let's hope that those, that trend stays low. Now, of course, that number isn't zero, right? I mean, that's the number that we all would like to have present in the Chatham Health District down in Portland. But, you know, we're at a 1.1% positive test result so far for the month of July. Again, for anybody who's listening, that's posted in the reopening information on the district website, and I'm going to continue to update the community with those numbers. So, before we jump into the reopening plan, I just want to share with you, again, some new guidance and, you know, some constantly shifting ground. Yesterday, I heard a news conference with the governor and the commissioner of education that indicated to me that some things are likely to change again. So, originally, we were developing a plan with the idea that all students would be returning to school. And last week, when I presented the plan to you, we have the three models, the all-in-person, hybrid, and distance learning. It was my understanding that the state expectation was that if the COVID transmission rate was low, that Portland, as well as all districts in the state, would be expected to open in person with all students attending, except for families that choose not to attend. And then there would be a separate program of distance learning for families that choose not to return. So that was the plan that you voted on last night, or last week, excuse me, that I submitted to the connect State Department of Education. Now, last night, what I heard from the commissioner and the governor is that there is now going to be some flexibility in that, and that districts may choose to go to school in a hybrid model, right? That it would be more of a local decision about whether we were to fully reopen, or reopen in a hybrid model. I have not seen any official communications to that extent. I did hear, again, in the press conference yesterday, the governor say that that would either be communicated to us through an executive order, or through legislative action. So we're, we've heard it stated, but we haven't seen it on paper yet. What would that mean? I imagine that if I were writing an executive order to that extent, it would say that the state would consider a distance learning day the same as an in-person day, so that a student who was distance learning, that would count towards the required 180 days, which, as we know, has been backed off to 177 school days. So that's all information that is hot off the press, and I can tell you has every superintendent in the state, and every reopening committee in the state buzzing right now with a lot of what-ifs, and what should we do, now that we do have some flexibility with respect to selecting which of the three models we want to implement. So let me stop there, because that's really big, and see if there are any questions or comments.
I would just say that that's, you know, that's the information that was in the paper today, too, that things are kind of in the hands of the state now to follow up with whatever kind of guidance from there. But there is that, that opening to do some kind of a hybrid. But I think what they said in the article I read is it's more likely with the, you know, high school kids, and maybe middle school, that that would be most effective. But that's a matter of judgment.
Laurel and I were on a webinar today with Miguel Cardona, who's the commissioner, and he did reiterate that they have backed off the in-person model, and are now allowing flexibility. But the message that I got today was that they're allowing all the LEAs, which are school districts, to make their own plan and do the best they can. They're not going to approve anything one way or the other. So it depends on what, what we decide here in Portland is best for our students.
I would only add to that, Meg, that he, that's exactly what he said, and he also added that there's a, he strongly believes that, given current numbers, that he, he expects that districts, districts should be working towards getting children back in school full-time, that he thinks that's, that's the best plan in this moment, and that he hopes that's what districts are working towards.
Charles, do you have any clarification about what constitutes low, moderate, and high risk?
So that is a terrific question, and that was exactly what I was about to talk about then. It teed me up perfectly for that. So that breaking news yesterday was interesting, because it does sound like we have some flexibility. What we haven't received yet, which is absolutely essential, is the guidelines for the tiered decision-making protocol for what constitutes low, what constitutes medium, what constitutes high. That is supposedly forthcoming. I am imagining that there is somebody with a great deal of anxiety right now about saying, "Well, six people in a district is okay, and zero is not, or 10 is," you know, what that number is. I haven't seen it yet. The Chatham Health District hasn't seen it yet, and I certainly hope that that isn't a local superintendent decision in the end. I would be very disappointed if it was, because I am not qualified to say what percentages are safe enough to implement the various models. So I haven't gotten that yet. If anything keeps me up at night about this, it's that. But that guidelines, it will be critical.
One of the things we learned yesterday, again, Laurel and I were on the webinar from CAE, and that question was what I asked, when are we going to get those guidelines? And I was told that it will be as close to school openings as it can be. They're waiting to see what the infection rate is, and if it goes up or down. So they're, you know, obviously looking at patterns, and they're looking at, you know, they're looking at numbers, but they're not going to release anything till later in the month, so I'm guessing mid-August. The other, the other part of this is that all of the daycare centers that were open during the last five months that had some good results with infection rates, and also infection control, could be our guideline, could be a source of guidance to how we proceed if we do in-person instruction, because they've had some good results with less infection and good containment of the infection rate. So, those are the two things that were mentioned yesterday.
Where are those numbers available, Meg? Do you know?
They, from the, I would imagine the Department of Early Childhood, that manages the daycare centers, would have some of that data. And I've heard that also from another webinar from Pennsylvania and Maryland, that the daycare centers in those states were also good resources for infection rate, infection control, and how they managed through the, the school closure, and the, and the state closures in the last five months.
All right, well, so, let's talk a little bit about the full reopening plan. So, last Tuesday, I presented, it was a long meeting, and it was voted on, the LEA reopening template. That was the document that I was required to submit to the State Department of Education by last Friday. I got it in Thursday, so a day early. I wonder if I get, studying my homework in early. So that went in Thursday, and since then, we've now been working on the full reopening plan. So I shared it with you. It is still in draft form. Credit, I have to, I can't say enough about the building principals, and the reopening committee has been working very hard now to build this out. The structure for the reopening plan goes like this. Reopening template, which is the 50,000-foot view. Then that reopening template information is packaged in the reopening plan. Underneath that is going to be district-level information, and then below that is going to be building-level information. So, I take, I took the reopening template, used it to design the table of contents and the initial introductions to each section. Then I used the district-level information to craft a whole district-level snapshot of what the plan looks like. And then the building principals are working at the building level to align the building practices to the district practices in that template. The reason we had to do it that way is because, obviously, social distancing looks very different at Valley View than it does at the high school. So Jessica will need some flexibility to work with her teachers and her team leaders to craft Valley View's plan, the same way Kate, at the high school, will need to work with her team to craft and communicate those expectations at the upper grades. So when you look at the plan I sent you, just so you don't confuse yourself, ignore the whole left-hand side, right? That only looks like that because it's in a development phase, and it hasn't been published. What you really want to look at is my introductory letter, and then the table of contents, and then the links below that. So, for example, if you look at the table of contents and you click the fall reopening model link, you'll get to a page that describes the fall reopening models. That first top part is literally lifted directly from the reopening template that you voted on last week. And then under it, it starts to tier down. So if you click the district-level information, you'll see there's a link to a podcast I did last week, picked Laurel a broad snapshot of what the models look like, and the sort of red, yellow, green tiered approach. And then I did a frequently asked questions of, you know, what these models would look like. And then from there, underneath it, the building principals are now building out their various sections. So, my hope is to take some feedback from you tonight, and I received some feedback from the reopening committee this morning, and the leadership team later on in the morning and early afternoon, and I'll take your feedback today. My plan is to continue working on this all day tomorrow. Release this to the public Thursday morning, and then Thursday night at 6:00, we're going to have our first of five Zoom Town Hall meetings. So Thursday at 6:00, it's going to be, Ms. Lawson and I are going to talk to high school students and parents about the reopening plan. And then next, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Valley View, Gildersleeve, Brownstone, Middle School, and me and those principals, so that we can answer building-specific questions from parents. So, the idea is, get feedback from you on this model tonight, use that feedback to tweak and continue developing the whole plan tomorrow, release the whole plan to the community Thursday, and then use the plan to frame some Zoom Town Hall meetings at the building level, starting Thursday and extending through next week.
Any thoughts?
Just, and you're, just to go through where you put in the graphs and the information you provided, this is going to end up being the entire plan? This, this document will flesh it all out?
This document is going to flesh it all out, and what's, what's going to be really important for us, and that's in the welcoming letter, and will, will be one of the first things we say in the Zoom Town Halls, is that this plan is evolving, right? I mean, it's subject to change, you know, up to and through the first week of school as we learn how well it's going, right? So, I would, the way I would characterize it is this plan is written on paper, not stone, or in this case, electronic format that's easy to change. So, regularly, we're, we're going to be adding content, and then as people have questions or present scenarios that aren't addressed in the plan, we would update the plan to answer those questions or reflect those hypothetical scenarios.
I'm going to make a couple of comments. I was overwhelmed when I first looked at it, and, and I did look at the left side, and then I closed it off, and then I looked at your table of contents. I thought there was a lot of reading that parents would have to go through in order to get to the nut of what you were trying to say. And I believe, quite frankly, that there are some expectations in the district area that encompass pre-K through 12, and those ought to be highlighted, because that's what parents are kind of interested in, I think. That's what I'm interested in. I thought you did an amazing job in, in covering a lot of different topics, but quite frankly, there was too much reading for me when I wanted to find out what Valley View was going to do about masks, you know, what the requirement was. I just, I struggled trying to go back and forth through it. And one of the things the policy committee did tonight was talk about the mask policy, and we're going to send that back to the committee, because it's, it's more complicated than we thought. But at the same time, when I looked at the reopening plan, and I finally figured out that I could search for mask information in the reopening plan, it gave me three pages of links. Some of it was relative, and some of it wasn't, and I still wasn't sure what the requirement was for masks all day long, mask breaks, some of the more esoteric parts of, of wearing a mask. So I was a little disappointed that, that I couldn't find the, the information as quickly as I would have liked to if I was a parent looking for specific information.
That's good feedback. I would also say that one of the things that isn't linked here yet, you'll see the links to it, but the links are dead as of now, because a lot of us are going to be in the studio tomorrow. We are making some videos to go with this, so what I'm hoping is that there, the, the plan will include really three ways to look at the information. One, you can listen to the podcast, which touches on a lot of this. Two, you can read it, but you're right, it's a lot of reading. I mean, it's, you know, if it were all printed out, this would be hundreds of pages, right?
Yep, that's what I figured.
Yeah. Or three, you know, I think we are going to put some videos together with the principals, and then we are going to record the Zoom Town Hall meetings and put those on here, too. So, it's either reading, listening to the podcast, or watching the videos. I think we're going to, you know, do all of those to communicate the information.
I don't know if it's feasible, but kind of jumping on what Meg is saying, that the accessibility of this website is, it just proves a little challenging. There's, you, the menu is enormous, and then you have to click on it, and then you want to read the district-level information, which has some redundancy from what was on the main page, but it also has redundancy from what's on the individual school pages. And so then if you're a parent, you want to click through to the school page, it's just, it's a lot to, it's a lot to navigate. And I'm wondering if it's possible structurally on the website for there to be a button on the homepage, where if you're a Valley View parent, you can click on the Valley View button and be taken to somewhere where all the Valley View information is collated. Or you can click on the Gildersleeve page and just see the Gildersleeve relevant information, instead of having to click through district information, and your school information, and reread stuff you've probably already read from the, from the main pages as well. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah.
Possible? I don't know.
I, I'm sure it is. It probably, yes. Let me go back and talk to my right-hand person, Holly Russo, who helped me design this. We can, you know, what you're, so I think what you're saying is, instead of having to, you know, click social distancing, read that, then click Valley View, just have Valley View and all of the Valley View information there.
Yep. It's, it's in, I mean, it's, the way you have it formatted is interesting for somebody like, you know, like me, as a board member, I want to click through each school, and I want to see the policies related to social distancing or face coverings for each of the schools. But if I'm a Gildersleeve parent, I want to be able to just click the Gildersleeve button and exclusively see the policies that are relevant to my students' experience at Gildersleeve, rather than having to wade through and find the pieces that are, it's just a lot of clicking. It'd be nice to avoid all that clicking for our parents.
No, I agree. And I, just an aside, I wish that we had more color. It was really depressing when I saw black and gray, and I'm going to be honest with you. Get some color on that bridge and color up the buttons, I think. It needs some color.
These will pop.
That's just a personal thing, but it was, it was kind of depressing.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's.
Sorry.
You don't have to go black and white, for sure.
Yeah.
Good feedback.
And I think, I, you know, again, I don't know what parents will want to know from, from us, but I, but I know for myself, I'd like to know the specifics of what the cleaning of bathrooms and classrooms might look like, how many times a day you're going to do that, or I know buses, cleaning of buses has been an issue and been raised. And I'd like to see some very, very specific information included. Mask breaks, what are they going to look like? And not just that we're going to have mask breaks, but that there are going to be incorporated into some outside time when kids could go out and socially distance and be on the blacktop or whatever. So I'd like to see more specifics going forward as well.
I assume that's the plan.
Was it just, it was just a format that he was going to be adding some of that specifics for the next iteration?
Right.
Yeah, right. This is just the draft of how do you get around the site. I think we've given some guidance, maybe you can reform it a little bit, but I don't think it had a lot of the meat of actually the details, because I don't know if those are actually 100% determined at this point. That was my interpretation. The other thing, I only have a comment I would make, I'm going to say this, that we should probably have some kind of a parents' expectations for each section, too. I mean, everybody wants to know what the school's doing, but we have expectations of what the parents should need to be doing, too.
True. That's, that's a good point.
I would add one, one thing to that, too, and that's a really good, a good point. It's a, it's an excellent point. You know, at some level, you know, we have to, you know, stop communicating information, otherwise the plan will go from 100 pages to 1,000 pages. I mean, it could, this plan could get really unwieldy. When I spoke with the building principals today, what we decided to do is cut it off at the building level, right? Now, clearly, what that means is, is at the classroom level, this is, that's where the rubber really hits the road, in terms of the implementation of it. Of course, teachers are going to communicate these expectations to students and to parents during the first weeks of school as part of the back-to-school orientation process. But it would be difficult for us to have a section for each, or at the classroom level to put information. We could go there, but, you know, that, that would seem like then we'd be really getting, you know, into a very large website.
Well, isn't, I don't know, I guess the way I was kind of looking at this is there should be more uniformity than that. There shouldn't be that much difference between Classroom A and Classroom B. If your child is at Valley View, regardless of what class they're in.
Right.
Unless they're a special, special ed student, and there's other considerations to be taken into account, this is what's going to, this is what's going to happen. And, and kind of in line with what Laurel said, maybe what you could do is just come up with a main page for each school. Kids will wear masks, kids will have X number of mask breaks, you know, whatever the basic information is. So a parent could go and say, "I only have 15 minutes. I don't really have time to read through this whole plan. What, what's the real deal? What, what do I need for my child? What do I need to know?" You know, about the cohorts, that they'll, you know, they'll get a information about what cohort, or however that's going to work for the kid. Kids, they're going to wear masks, they're required. If there's some medical issue, what they have to do, you know, just the real basics. And then, from there, maybe there could be links to the more detailed information for when a parent has time. But I think what Laurel was saying, as I understood it, is not everybody's going to always have the time to go through in great detail. And like you have the, the page where you show the red, yellow, and green, something along those lines. That might be helpful, too.
So it's interesting, as you guys are, are talking here, my principals are texting me manically here and saying, "Oh, let me answer that question. Let me tell you what we're doing." They have also been working very hard.
I'm sure.
Jessica has raised her hand, and so has Kate. If you'd like to hear from them, let, let me know. They're texting me and chomping at the bit to, you know.
Sure.
Respond to some of this. Can you unmute Jessica Broon? She's wanted to kind of, you know, talk a little bit about how she's thinking about communicating the Valley View plan.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
So yes, I was listening to what you were saying, and I think some of the things might be hard to find how it's labeled, and I think that that was a really good point. I know at Valley View, I did put information about masks and, under the face covering section, of what we were actually going to do. And I've been talking to the kindergarten parents, too, as they come in and I meet with them. But we are incorporating several mask breaks into the day, so we'll have indoor and outdoor mask breaks. The indoor mask breaks will be by staggered row, so it's not everybody at once. It might be 15 minutes this row gets their mask off, then another row 15 minutes later, and kind of rotate like that. Outside, we've increased recess to twice a day for 30 minutes. We're encouraging teachers to do some outdoor lessons, is storytime, you know, read alouds outside. do some outdoor lessons as story time, you know, read alouds outside. Our, we're very fortunate at Valley View to have a lot of outside area. So that's one of the things we will utilize. So we do have a lot of breaks built into the day as far as the masks go. In addition to that, PE will be outside and other opportunities to get outside. So, you know, and lunch, of course, they won't have their masks on as well. And our age group, they're going to need many mask breaks. I'm meeting with the families, and I'm seeing the kindergartners come in, our future kindergartners, and, you know, they're there getting assessed for about 20 minutes, and it's difficult for them to keep the mask on. So, you know, we're going to have to work with them and teach them. You know, I talked to parents about that as well, and build their stamina, just like we do for independent readers. You know, we celebrate, oh, wow, you did it for five minutes. Wow, you did it for 10 minutes, and have a celebration as they increase their time. But it's going to look very different at Valley View, you know, compared to some of the other grades. We have three-year-olds. You know, we have three, four, five, six-year-olds. So it's going to look a lot different, and there will be lots of mask breaks. But it is listed on the site. I just think it's kind.
I'm also getting texts. Ryan Wallstrom would love to talk to you a little bit about how the approach he's using to designing his site, and Kate Lawson. We're just unmuting them. Did you get Ryan or Kate off?
Yes, I was just unmuted.
Okay, there's Ryan. Ryan, why don't you talk a little bit about your, your approach to developing your sections?
Sure. So, good evening, everyone. Jessica and I actually have been working very closely together, so I'm not going to repeat, you know, all that she said, but those pieces will look very similar at Gildersleeve. The mask breaks, looking for as many opportunities as possible to get students outside. And, you know, one of the, I've been talking with a lot of parents based on their responses to the surveys. Most of the questions are about masks and what we're doing, you know, related to that. So, you know, of course, we talk about a recess in the morning, or, we're not even calling it recess, really, it's an outside time in the morning, in the afternoon, making outdoor spaces available, mask breaks inside. But another thing we're doing, and usually we try to do the opposite, but, but because of this situation, the schedule, we're making it very choppy on purpose, making it so that, you know, every 45 minutes or so, something changes. It might be that a special teacher comes in, or it's time for an outdoor period, or, you know, lunch, a movement break, those types of things. And I think, you know, in many cases, that's putting parents at ease, because they're, they're envisioning it as, you know, just sitting in the classroom for lesson after lesson after lesson, you know, rank and file in the rows. And it's not that. Jessica and I are working very hard to create an experience that is tailored towards students in pre-K through 4th grade.
And Kate Lawson, did you have anything you wanted to, you know, talk about in terms of how you're working with your teams to develop your sections, and how you're kind of getting ready for our, our big show on Thursday night, we're hoping?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, everybody. I think that at the high school, we're taking a slightly different approach, because we are not doing the direct cohorting, because we are extending the instructional blocks from our 45-minute periods to approximately 87 minutes, with the idea that within that 87 minutes, teachers would be teaching about 75 of them, whether that's in very different instructional activities, and we would be embedding the breaks, the movement breaks, the mask breaks, within that, within that time period. My comment that I really wanted to make really went back to Meg and Laurel's comment at the beginning of the meeting. We can absolutely provide sort of a one-page summary of what is the content of the website. In fact, I was already starting to think about ways that we were going to provide that for our students, because I would want them to have reminders about 30 minutes before they walked in the door, because that's what high school kids need. So we would, we can, we can certainly put that together, and the principals worked very hard to make sure that many of our policies were developmentally aligned pre-K 12. So I have a high degree of confidence that, that families will see some continuity across, across buildings.
And so I think what you just heard from, from Jessica, Ryan, and Kate matches exactly what we've been talking about, is that there, there are enough nuanced differences between the buildings that we're going to have to communicate them in different ways. I love the idea of having a link to each building where all of that information can access. And I'm going to go work tomorrow to redesign the website to accomplish that. But that's why I think it's important that we do these Zoom Town Hall meetings with me and the principal from those buildings, so that we can answer questions that are more appropriate to the developmental age of the children or students, and of course, you know, do our best to kind of lay this out in a way that, that matches what the reality is going to be K through 12 in the different locations.
I'm heartened by what I've heard from the building principals, although, you know, it isn't all down on paper or down in, down in digital form yet. And I know they're doing their due diligence, but I know as a parent, or as somebody that would be sending somebody to school, these are the most pressing things that, that we would need to know. So I'm glad we're having this conversation, and that this is a developing document that will contain a lot more specifics than what I saw last night in the, the document. So thank you, and thank you to the principals that are working so hard.
Charles, I'd like to just respond to that quickly, if I could, because I was thinking about this earlier, Meg, when you were sharing your feedback, which is really, really helpful on, on the website. A lot of these things that we just talked about, they are in our more detailed plans. And what we're trying to figure out now, especially in creating the website, is how much is too much? Of course, you know, as the administrators, we have to think through all these details, you know, very specific details to how often will the bathrooms be cleaned? How will we get the students from their classrooms to the bathroom? And, you know, how will that look different at, at Gildersleeve than it does at Valley View? And we have wrangled with that, and, you know, collaborated with each other, and worked independently in some situations, you know, to do it. And I think we have all of that down, but there, some of those pieces are still going to need to be communicated. So I guess what I want to leave you with is, we have thought through a lot of that, and we have even gone as far as, as writing it down. I mean, I think my plan is, is 26 pages, and I know the others are as well. But when we created the website, we didn't want to put every single detail there to overwhelm families. So we got to find that balance.
Well, I think you will, and just thank you for explaining that a little bit further. I think that the Town Hall meetings will serve two purposes. One is, you'll get a chance to expose people to where you are, but in the conversation, the risks and the, and the, you know, outlier kind of questions are going to point to looking for more solutions. And I always think that more brains sometimes are, more input is better than not. So it, it sounds like the Town Hall meetings will produce some interesting results and maybe some further, better solutions than, than you have right now.
And the other piece, the other piece I would add to that, too, is, and that's why I thank you again for giving us the first week of all half-days, right?
Yeah.
We're going to, Ryan has in his mind now clearly an understanding of how bathrooms will be accessed, and how that's going to happen in a safe way. The half-days are going to give us the opportunity to see it, because we've never done this before. This is a brand-new approach to teaching and learning, for sure. And then in the afternoon, meet with his teams to reflect on, on what happened, right? So I certainly anticipate that, and I know, because I've watched the brilliant minds of our leadership team work these problems in a sort of, hey, here's what I think might work kind of way. And, and thank you for giving us the half-days to pilot it. And then, of course, we're going to learn from that. You know, we're going to see what worked. We're going to start to figure out how these things can be improved on. And, and of course, that's what our, our teachers do. I mean, it's read and flex, right? Figure out what worked and capitalize on it. Figure out what didn't work and troubleshoot it. This is going to be a really unique experience in September.
Can I, can I just respond to Ryan real quick? I thank you for, for that point, that you, you have your 26-page plan. What I would suggest in terms of trying to figure out where the line is with sharing enough information, and, you know, not wanting to share too much information that it's overwhelming. I think different people need different amounts of information in order to feel comfortable and safe. And so I think if you, if the, you know, if each school has a one or two-page link on the website or document that covers the basics, painting a picture of what a school day is going to look like for a child at that school, that might be enough information for a lot of parents. But if you can also include on that page a link to the full 26-page document, then the parent who is really concerned and wants to know every single detail about how frequently the bathroom's going to be cleaned, and what exactly the library book checkout policy will be, or the sharing of paintbrush, you know, whatever, whatever the question is, if you don't, if you're able to include the link to the bigger document, then that might fill a need for, for some parents.
That's a great suggestion.
And those who don't want it, or think it's too much, can just ignore it and be satisfied with the, you know, the general overview of safety and what the days will look like.
I just, you know, I think there's been a lot of good feedback already. I think, you know, this, what you put out here to begin with is a, is a great start, and you guys, we appreciate all the hard work you're putting in.
Nice to hear. Thank you.
I would like to add that board members could be invited to just listen to the Town Hall meetings, just to see how it goes. And that also gives us a chance to listen to the constituents, the stakeholders, and, and maybe address some things in policy or whatever. So if you would invite us to those meetings, I'd appreciate it.
So for, for all of the links to those, they're going to, you're going to be able to access those the same way you access the board meetings. We'll, we'll have them on the homepage, and
Perfect.
they'll be in Zoom. So we'll be up in the studio, and we'll start at 6:00 and invite, invite people in. Our principals are brilliant communicators, too, and they, they have developed incredible relationships with their faculty, staff, and parents. So I really am confident that, sitting next to them, that we're going to be able to answer as many questions as we can. And, and of course, I imagine we're going to be stumped by some questions, and we'll have to go find that information.
Is now an appropriate time to ask some specific questions about the content of this document? Or are you going to, did you want to talk through sections?
I'm open to anything. How do you want to do, you want to go section by section, or do you want to sort of?
Maybe topic by topic.
Topic by topic, sure.
Yeah.
So why don't, why don't we start with, and again, a lot of this will be very familiar to you, because I did spend last Tuesday going over the, the broad outline, so you might get a more detailed picture. So again, the homepage is, is just my message. You know, I tried to, you know, strike a tone of recognizing how challenging this is going to be, and, you know, articulating some of the difficulties in that this plan will evolve. You know, it's not ever going to be done. It's something we're going to learn from and, and improve as we go. So again, don't look on the left side. I think that's going to confuse you. Just look down the middle at the table of contents, and we'll go section by section that way. So the fall reopening model, if you click that link, again, you get here the, the three models, right? Depending on the transmission rates that Chris asked about before, and we don't have yet, we have three plans. We have full reopening, we have hybrid, and we have distance learning. And a program of distance learning for any families that choose for any reason whatsoever to not send their students back for in-person learning. So we have to design four programs between now and September 1st, and that will, will be a ton of work, but I'm confident we'll do a great job at it. Interesting, the flexibility now says that we could choose, and I'm going to sort of end with that when we get to the last part of this, we could choose as a district, and I think it will be a recommendation that comes to you as the board and a vote. We could choose to open in hybrid or all-in. I think that, you know, that's something we're going to have to make a decision about. I know families are planning work schedules and life and want to know sooner than later, and, you know, appreciate everybody's flexibility and patience to that end. So why don't we start there? Any feedback or questions on that section?
I think that's a great letter. I think you put it out there quite well.
Thank you.
And it seems to flow pretty well. I mean, once you're in there, and you can click, you know, below, and you see the information, like Laurel was saying, you can see the information to each school.
And we're going to have videos there, and, and multiple ways, and multiple languages that this can be done. And I'm actually working with Dawn to try to secure the services of a sign language interpreter to help communicate the information that way, too.
I was impressed also with the fact that it was all translated in Spanish. That was helpful.
All right. So I'll go to the, the next section, which is titled Distance Learning for Families Choosing Not to Attend School in Person. If you click that link, you'll see there that we are committed to supporting every family in the district. And a family does not need a medical note or any reason beyond their comfort level to request distance learning. And in the district-level information, I provide a Q and A about what that would look like. Our goal is to match students who choose not to come back to school with the teachers who don't come back for in-person learning for various reasons. And that they would sort of run a parallel program, so they'd be covering the same content and the same standards. This is complicated, but as best we can, a team of teachers would be working with a group of students outside of the bricks-and-mortar classroom in the distance learning format. Now, that is going to look very, very different from building to building, you know, and certainly when we get to the high school level, it looks very different. And I imagine that that is going to be a lot of the questions that Kate and I will entertain Thursday night, and a large part of the work that we have to do between now and September 1st is identify those students and build that program.
My opinion for this section, though, is where we're willing to raise expectations that if they're going to be distance learning, that they treat it as such, and the parents are on board with that, you know, so we don't go through some of the things we went through in the spring. Expectations are that, you know, first class, like a homeroom class, attendance is taken, they're participating the whole day, things are done. I mean, I think we really do need to set expectations.
Agreed.
I, I guess I had questions about this section. It, I know we discussed before that at-home learners would be assigned to the nine-ish teachers who are not going to be returning for in-person learning, and, I mean, for in-person teaching. I hadn't thought all the way through the rest of that thought, which is that those children will not then have, be assigned to a classroom teacher. And so that, that part of this document was a little bit of a surprise to me, that at the point that we maybe if, when moved to full-distance learning this year, that those children would stay in a separate program. And I'm trying to, I guess I'm, I'd love to hear you talk a little bit more about the reasoning there, because I'm thinking, you know, if I were the parent of that child, I'd be worried that that child be missing out on same-age peer interaction, on having a teacher who specializes in the curriculum that is appropriate for that grade level. So I was, could you, could you talk a little bit about that, Charles?
So there are lots of layers on this one, right? K-6 will be entirely different than 712. K-6 teachers are certified K-6 to teach any of the content areas. So that's where K-6 certified teachers will work with their groups of students in distance learning. 712 becomes way more complicated, because of course, we get into the content areas. We have science, social studies, math, English, world language. We have a lot of work to do in terms of scheduling, and Kate and I had a long conversation about how we do this today, and whether we say to some of our teachers, whereas normally, you're an English teacher, you have five sections of in-person students, you may find yourself with four sections of in-person and one section of distance this year. Or if we can't accommodate that, we may need to, and we're going to talk about budget shortly, pay that teacher for a sixth section, right? So in the hybrid and the all-in-person, the student would stay with that teacher. In the distance for continuity, and because it takes, of course, a while for the teacher to develop the relationship with the student, we feel like it would be more disruptive if we went to hybrid or distance, to move the students that are in, the families that choose not to return distance program, to the teachers that are working with the students either in-person full-time or either in-person full-time or in the hybrid model. Not sure if that answered the question entirely.
Yeah, you know, it, it does. And I, I follow your logic on that. Yeah.
Charles, can I chime in for a second?
Of course. This is Ryan.
Yeah, yeah. So Laurel, in addition to what Charles said, one of the things we're trying really hard to do, and really, you know, we, we focused so much on the facilities and getting our plans done in the month of July, and a lot of the curriculum work will be done in August. But, but one of the things we're going to try really hard is, well, two things really. One is to, to make the in-person instruction parallel the distance learning instruction as much as possible. And looking at, you know, incorporating more technology into the physical classroom when students are, are there, so that they're prepared to transition to distance learning if they need to. And then, you know, on the, the flip side of that, making sure that, you know, if we're using workbooks in the classroom, the students have those math workbooks at home to do those pieces as well. So making that as parallel as possible. I don't have all the answers to, to, as to how we're going to do that yet, but I have, you know, great teachers and, you know, we'll, we'll work to develop that from a curriculum standpoint. The other, other piece is that the teachers at most of our schools have common planning time built into the schedule. So if it is a teacher who might not, who is facilitating the distance learning, but might not, you know, be on that, or have been scheduled to be on that team this year, they will be able to join via Google Meet or Zoom to co-plan with those other teachers, which will eliminate, you know, some of those discrepancies or, you know, some of those concerns around, you know, a teacher coming from, and I just give this as a random example, but, you know, if it was a sixth grade teacher who ended up, you know, doing the distance learning for third grade, they would still have the chance to collaborate with the team. And again, I just use that as a random example. That's, you know, not something that's in the works right now, but that collaboration is going to be key.
And if it's okay, if I can jump in from the secondary perspective, Charles? It is, it is critically important to me that the students who are electing to be home for distance learning for a variety of reasons, have the opportunity to segue back in. For me, it is, it is a significant equity issue, grade seven through 12, as far as accessing the curriculum and being able to, to connect back. And it, and it's really hard to join a secondary course in progress. So as we design the distance learning model, it's going to be very standards and skill-based so that kids are able to, to make that transition if they want to.
That's, and that's a really important point that Kate said. We, we will be ready the, the day a student wants to come from distance learning to in-person. We are, we are asking for a week's notice, but families will have the opportunity to transition back to in-person learning with one week's notice. Our goal is to provide also families the opportunity to transition from in-person to distance learning with one day's notice. So we want to have both of these programs going. We want to run them as parallel as possible so that students moving between the two programs could do so without gaps in the scope and sequence. But we, we want to make sure that, that we're providing pathways.
And Charles, if I, this is Jessica, if I can just piggyback off of that. I talked to a lot of the kindergarten parents about that because they did ask about that. And I said, and I, you know, did explain that anytime they can do that. However, I highly encourage that they wait until the trimester. And the reason being is we are still grading and progress monitoring and assessing. And the way we assess digitally for the people that are online is going to look different than when you're assessing in-person. And it, it's good to be able to finish that process and have a smooth transition back into the classroom or vice versa. And the parents were very understanding when I explained that. I said, you know, you can do it at any time. However, I do recommend that you wait for the trimester and they understood why. So I just want to put that out there, that even though that you can do it at any time, it makes a lot of sense to kind of wait for that smooth transition.
And I would, I would jump in and second that. I'm going to make the same strong recommendation at the secondary level that they do it at the quarter. I anticipate for some of our students, especially at the secondary level, there may be some social pressures to return to school with friends or when a sports season changes. Those are sort of unknown variables right now. But from an academic curriculum continuity perspective, the quarter would be best. But I want the distance learning aligned so that we can make it work whatever the family needs.
That's an important point. We're, we're going to make recommendations, but we're going to be prepared to meet families' requests. And also, I want to be, be clear to everybody that, that those students are participating in Portland students, they're distance learning, they're our students. And they are a part of our community and loved and welcomed just as much as our students in-person. And they are going to be able to participate in any of the activities that we're able to run safely or anything that we're doing outside of the classroom, they will, will be allowed to do that. I'm, I'm going to be, if it's a sports team that's running and they're distance learning at home and they want to do the sports team, I know that that's raised some eyebrows a little bit, but I, I, they are our students. They are just choosing a different format for a short period of time until we get a vaccine. And I want them to be interacting with us and, and keeping the relationship with their friends and teachers and coaches strong. So we want as many ladders as we can build between the distance learning program and the in-person learning program as possible so that on that glorious day, when we're all back together in January, we're all back together and we haven't developed any gaps or strained any relationships.
Have you, oh, sorry Lauren.
Oh, I was just, I was just going to ask, do we have any teachers that are going to be doing distance learning that may be doing any teaching outside of their certified content area?
That is the elephant in the room. I tell you what, why don't I, we hold that question until we talk a little bit about the budget.
Okay.
That there, we have a real challenge with that at the high school level because the certifications aren't high school certifications.
Right.
It, it, that is a potential problem and that problem can only be answered unfortunately with some dollars that are attached to it.
Okay. And then similarly, if we're looking at say K6, could we have a teacher managing, say, kindergarten, first and second grade distance learning all at the same time? Or fourth and fifth, or, or any combination of different classes?
We're going to try to avoid that and try to have teachers working with just a grade level. That said, it could be conceivable that we only have one first grader who chooses distance learning and 12 second graders. In that case, we might have to, you know, we can't have one teacher teaching just one, one student. We, we might have to look at doing some, some combinations in, in that case.
Sounds to me as though we have a virtual academy with pretty much a permanent group of students who are only going to do the distance learning. It sounds like we have to have the plan for distance learning, should we go to a hyper model or to a complete distance learning model, which means that looks a little different. And of course, the in-person instruction. When you talk about a virtual academy where we have a permanent group of students who are now only doing distance learning, that classroom model that with the teacher teaching all the subjects in seven and a half hours, do we expect that the distance learning virtual academy kids are going to be doing seven hours worth of zooming and reading online and all of that in, in the course of what we would consider to be a normal school day or the average school day?
Um, that, that, that's, so I guess I would frame the question that way is if you're distance learning, are you going to be in a meeting like this with your teacher for the entire day? Right? Is that, that's kind of what you're, you're, the question?
Kind of, right. If the classroom, yeah, right. If the classroom model that is seven and a half hours a day with a in-person teacher, does that translate to an in-person Zoom teacher with, with our distance learning students?
So we're, we're going to spend the month of August designing the program. Let me answer that question and maybe give you some real world examples. And I would love to introduce you to the team of teachers that are going to be teaching it. And they can speak specifically about what their expectations are going to be.
Okay, thank you. That, that satisfies me for now.
Hey Charles, I have a quick question. On, on the high school level, why couldn't we just have them access the classroom that's being taught and they listen in and participate via, you know, the Google or, or Zoom or whatever you have access to? So you don't have to have a special teacher or a special learning environment?
So hold that thought because I have heard, and, and again, we, we haven't gotten to the point where we've negotiated a memorandum of understanding with the Portland CEA. But I, I have heard pretty clearly that the expectation that you get a class list and that half the kids on that class list would be with you in-person and the other half would be at home and you would be responsible for managing both the in-person and the kids at home, would be a bridge too far for teachers. And, and I can certainly empathize with that. I could see how that would be a tremendous challenge if I were teaching US history and 15 of my kids were in the classroom and five were at home and I was trying to both manage the classroom and the students at home.
So Charles, that's what we're asking in our hybrid model. That's exactly what we're asking of our teachers in the hybrid model, right?
In, in some cases, that, that, that may be what we're, we're talking about for sure. To the extent that hopefully the hybrid would turn into full-time in-person, you know, that, that's part of the goal. But yes, that is a very good point. Again, I think a lot of that detail is going to be worked out over the next four weeks as we engage the teachers, curriculum writing, design the programs, and, and now do the heavy work of designing what we have in mind. The other one I want to throw in there, and I don't want to confuse everybody too much, we're referring it to as an inverted distance learning model. It is possible that we may have a high school teacher who isn't able to come back. That high school teacher may find him or herself teaching from home. The students that are in class, the students in class might be supervised by a substitute or a paraprofessional while the teacher from home provides the instruction. So those are also models that we're taking a look at.
I would just echo what Dave said, that I, I hope you'll, especially at the high school level, thoroughly explore whether it's feasible for our at-home learners who are high schoolers to be able to attend regular classes and that there's some live streaming of what's happening. It seems to me that that, that if we're exploring that model as a hybrid anyways, that it, it makes a lot of sense to me that we would explore that for our, for our current, you know, students who are committed to at-home learning rather than trying to develop for them a, a fourth separate learning model.
I think that, you know, I'd love, I, I have a, a feeling that in mid-August, late August, I'll be prepared to actually show you the curriculum and show you the programs in, in greater detail. So, and I think a lot of those answers about how the communications are expected, how they'll be taught, will be more fully fleshed out. All right, let's jump to the next one. So, so go back to your homepage where my message is. The next button is the communications plan. Again, this, this one, I, you know, we, we may not even need necessarily building links to it, except that I, I do think the, the buildings could put their Friday messages in it. We're going to communicate with the community by posting information on our website over the school messenger, which allows us to communicate with voice messages, text messages and email. And then every Friday, our principals are going to be sending out their weekly Friday emails. In addition to those, we're going to communicate the very real possibility that we're transitioning from say, all-in-person to hybrid or hybrid to distance in real time, the same way we would communicate weather-related emergencies, which are generally over school messenger. And then I have in the district information, a listing of all the media sources, WPIC and Fox 61 and all the different places that we also communicate what changes. Any questions about communications?
Well, looks good.
Daily operations, facilities and cohorting. Oh boy. So again, this will look different at each of the buildings, right? So K through eight, students are going to be co-horted, but even at Brownstone Valley View Middle School, they're going to look a little different. So in general, we've been able to accomplish the six feet of space between desks. We're going to have lots of signs and messages in developmentally appropriate language and very clear health and safety protocols that involve regularly washing hands and sanitizing and, you know, do, doing all the things we, we need to do that reflect best practices to keep kids sanitary and safe. So here is where it will be important for the, the building principals to more clearly articulate how they're going to social distance and what the facilities are going to look like at, at the building level. I did get up here, pretty sure it's this one, where we're going to have some, some pictures of what the classrooms look like and then some, you know, descriptions of, of the various value of need for and approach to cohorting and maintaining a safe facility.
When are the class lists going to be distributed? Well, obviously the survey will have to be done first before class lists are done. But I know in the, in the past, kids came to school during one of the few days before school began to meet teachers, see where they're going to be. Is there any reasonable way to expect that we do a Zoom or a live stream at some point that parents can log the kids into so they can see where they're going to be going or how they're going to enter the building? Is that, is that a possibility?
So Meg, I kind of talked to kindergarten parents about that today. And, um, because that came up and, you know, we were talking about just doing a virtual meet and greet, because we usually do a meet and greet.
Yep.
Or instead just make it a virtual one so that at least they could see inside the classroom and see their teacher. And, and, you know, it could be a little bit more welcoming.
Yeah, it diffuses a lot of school anxiety, which I'm sure is, you know, over the top at this point. So thank you. I, I would love to see that happen. Thank you. That's a great idea.
In addition to that, Meg, I, I just talked to a fourth grade teacher today who was putting together a, a Google slideshow that introduced herself and it was, she was asking if she could, you know, do a, a Google Meet session with her new class as an orientation prior to the first day. And it was neat. It was a lot of really fun information about her and gathering some fun information about her students. So I thought that was a great idea. And I have to be completely honest.
That's a wonderful idea.
I have not, for those that are coming, those students that are coming in to do the in-person learning, I haven't completely lost hope or, you know, let go of the idea of bringing in small groups prior to the year starting. I don't know exactly what that will look like. And of course, you know, that will be a conversation with, you know, Charles to make sure that we all believe that, that it's safe. It's, you know, and we would do it at all elementary schools or not do it and, and make it virtual, as Jessica said. But I guess I haven't let go of that yet.
Okay. Well, that, that's wonderful and thank you. And I know teachers will want to be meeting their class as well. So anything we can do to diffuse some of that first day anxiety would be really wonderful. So thank you.
And I would, I would second that from the secondary level. We have already completed phase one of a freshman orientation where kids would have the opportunity to connect with an upperclassman, big brother, big sister. And the student senate is working on sort of a, a phase two, as well as a program for incoming seventh graders. One of the things we've always done at the high school, especially for our high need students, is to, to provide the opportunity for them to come in when the school is not crowded and we practice. And we, and we walk the schedule and we practice the locker. And, and, and those are many of our special need students. But the comfort level to be able to do that allows us to relationship build with kids ahead of time. And it can't be undervalued.
Thank you. That's why we have such a good school system, because you guys are on top of it.
Can I just ask? I have the Gilder Sleeve schedule open right now. And I noticed just two things stood out to me. One is that for the hybrid model, it appears that there's not a morning recess. I don't know if that was just a mistake or if there's a reason that for the hybrid, there will only be one recess versus two?
Yeah, that is accurate, Lauren.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. That is accurate. I took out the afternoon recess purposely because the students would only be there with their teacher two days. Now, that's not to say that we couldn't do a short outside time in the period or even lessons outside in the afternoon. Maybe it's that if you see a writer's workshop there in the afternoon, maybe we create a schedule where, you know, teachers are able to go outside and, you know, teach writing at least, you know, one of those two days outside. But I was concerned about the number of instructional minutes given.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And actually, if we're going to talk about recess, you know, is there going to be any consideration for the Board of Education to create a policy or for the schools to create a policy requiring outerwear for the children? And do we have to be concerned about possibly supplying outerwear for children that may not be able to do so?
Do we have a policy like that already? I think there is a policy about attendance and outerwear.
That would be in the parent handbook. I would look in, and I can look in the parent handbook. That's, I don't believe there's a policy that specifies dress code or how children should be dressed. That's up to the individual.
No, but it talks about appropriate outerwear.
Right. I'm not talking about a dress code. I'm saying if it's chilly, the child needs to have a hat and possibly some gloves. If we're going to try to have an entire class outside for class, you can't have one or two kids freezing. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying dress code.
And Lauren, that is something we work on. We work with families to support them in that every fall and as we, you know, get into the colder, you know, winter season and with snow pants and jackets and all of that. So there are some, you know, some plans in place. And I've seen in the last three years, like Gilder Sleeve to support families.
Okay, thank you.
At Valley View, the nurse has a closet. We get lots of donations. You probably know. We get lots of donations, yeah, from families. And so we do, and we do send out communication to remind people about the mittens and the, and we always do the mitten tree too around the holidays. And if someone really needs something, we will work to get it for them.
And we also at the high school have our full clothing closet, which is, you know, inside wear as well as outside wear and really could house, could service anybody as soon as they get into the adult extra-small and right on up through men's extra-large, because we're looking at teen and adult clothing.
And a social worker each building who is very proactive to. All right, so maybe I can take us back to home. The next one is relatively easy. It's the child nutrition one. This says that we will meet all of our obligations under law to provide free and reduced-priced meals and meet our obligations. It's also important to note here that families that choose to have their students distance learning, we will provide meals for those families as well. So it will be a pickup, the same way we did in the spring. But if families choose to not attend in-person learning, they will still have access to free and reduced-priced meals and the school lunch program.
Will that include breakfast, Charles? Dr. Britton?
That would include anything that they would be entitled to in non-pandemic times.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so back to our homepage, transportation. Again, this is a fraught one, right? I mean, this is one that I know has everybody's attention and may influence our decisions and recommendations about whether we start in a hybrid model or start in an everybody-in model. We are going to encourage parents to drive their kids to school this year. We asked in the survey and about a little over a third of our parents indicated that they would be driving their students to school. Our security officer is working with the Portland Police Department and the building principals, and we're doing a traffic study at each of the buildings to see what we need to do, if anything different, to accommodate what we imagine is going to be an increase in the number of vehicles dropping students off, as well as the buses and teachers moving into the parking lots. Some of our buildings, that's more complicated than others, i.e. Gilder Sleeve. But we're doing that traffic study and we're going to put together here a detailed plan and communicate it to parents about how to drop students off at school in a way that we can get them in as effectively and efficiently as possible. As far as the buses, if we're in-person and everybody's on the bus, the buses will be loaded from front to back, students will be in masks, and we will be moving students off the bus as quickly as we possibly can to limit any potential for the spread of COVID. And of course, if we go to hybrid, the busing capacity would be reduced by 50%. Again, that may be another reason, sort of seeding the clouds a little bit here, why you might hear a recommendation in the weeks to come about starting in a hybrid just so that we can study this, see what the transportation looks like, what the needs are, how full the buses are, and again, how we can maximize safety during that time when students are being transported.
Charles, can I ask? I saw in here that it still says buses will be sanitized at the end of each school day. And I'm wondering if you were able to make any progress with the bus company about whether it's feasible to sanitize bus seats between bus runs during the day?
Debbie and her husband are enjoying vacation this week. When she gets back, I plan to sit down with Debbie and John and flesh this out in greater detail.
Okay. And are you going to talk to them about whether they feel that bus monitors, particularly at the beginning of the year, would be a smart investment to ensure mask protocols are being followed and that kids are being safe?
For sure. I'll revisit that with Debbie. Last time I spoke with her, she indicated to me that she didn't feel like there were people out there willing to do it. I'll push her on that a little bit more and say, shouldn't we at least explore the possibility? And then, of course, that would be something that, you know, would come with an added cost. But I still have to sit down with Debbie and John and figure this out. They've been on vacation. I wanted to respect that. So that is something that's still in the works.
And so I, yeah, I hear you. You're going to, it sounds like you've got more to figure out about that. But I'm curious if that's something that are, that if they're thinking it's hard for them to find the people to do it, is that something that our district could look into directly? Finding 10 individuals to ride buses, particularly with the elementary school level, to monitor those pickups and drop-offs?
I just want to be careful on that. I really need to go back and study our contract and figure out if we can, you know, require that or, you know, should that be something that we would expect them to provide? I just want to be careful. I think that there's a couple of layers on that that involve our contract with M&amp;J and what we can be doing or what we can reasonably expect them to be doing. And then who pays for what and how we do that.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Are we going to be planning to stagger buses coming into a school area so that kids are not sitting on a bus at some point? I'm thinking of the open choice kids when they come down from Hartford, sit on the bus for sometimes 10 or 15 minutes.
We're not going to do that this year. My, our expectation is going to be that as quickly as we can get students off the bus, we're going to get them off.
You know, going back and thinking about bus monitors, is it possible to ask paraprofessionals who would be willing to do it to go to the bus company station and get on the bus and ride as a bus monitor? And then that person would be coming into the building with that group of students? That might be a way to get the buses unloaded a little bit quicker. And that person would also know the kids that are on that bus. So we could use personnel that we already have. Again, depending on the contract with M&amp;J, whether that would be allowed, insurance, you know, things considered and all the rest of it.
It's a good idea. I'll look into it.
Very good idea, Meg.
Yeah, really good idea.
Well, we've done that with kindergartners in the past, I believe. Put some pairs on kindergarten first week of school, and that made a difference.
Okay, let me push us forward then. The next in the table of contact tends brings us to health reporting practices and protocols. So, yeah, this is going to be an interesting year, right? I'm not sure if anybody listened to my podcast, but in that I reminded people that part of our morning routine this year is going to have to be, for our older kids, here are the self-check things you should be looking at. Do you have a fever? Do you have a sore throat? Do you have body aches? Does your, as your taste buds, right? Younger children, our parents are going to need to do a morning screen. And not only self-screen and screening of each other, the second question has to be, does anybody I live with in this house have any of these things going on with them? If the answer to any of those questions is yes, it's got to be stay home, right? And the same for our faculty and staff. I have been guilty of powering through a day when I wasn't feeling well because I had too much to do or work to do that needed to get done. And, you know, hey, pop a couple of Advil or Tylenol and go to work and suck it up, Charles, right? I mean, I have been absolutely guilty of that. Those practices are not going to be acceptable this year. If you're not feeling well, stay home. That is the number-one message we need to get out there. And I realize it's inconvenient in this work. I realize it's inconvenient to have to rearrange your day to take care of a sick child or be available. But that's the commitment we have to make to each other. So we're going to really push that point this year. The other thing that's different this year is historically, if a student comes to the nurse's office and isn't feeling well, a common practice, if the student has the Tylenol release form, is often the nurse will give the Tylenol, notify the parent, and send the student back to class. That's not going to happen this year. If students report that they're sick or are reported that they're not feeling well, we are going to have containment rooms in the nurse's office. Parents are going to have to come pick students up very quickly. So this health reporting practices and protocols, it looks a little different by building level in terms of the dynamics of it. But the message in general is if you're not feeling well or you don't feel well while you're in school, we need to remove you from the school to keep each other safe, keep people safe. So that's the general guideline there. I can tell already that this is going to be a Herculean task for our nurses and our administrators next year.
And we're going to be treating any symptom that's listed, sore throat, whatever. We're not going to determine, well, we can't, obviously. But nurses will assume that it's a reason to remove a student to an isolation room and then send them home, even if it's a strep sore throat or whatever. How do kids get back in if it's not coronavirus?
So Meg, that's a really good question. And, you know, I have to go back to what Chris asked earlier. We are expecting to get guidelines that answer that question, right? That we send a student home because they're not feeling well? What are the conditions and expectations for them returning, right? A lot of this information, we don't have from our Department of Public Health yet. I would expect and hope that we're going to get that well before the start of the school year so that we can study it, understand it, understand when and how we have to call the Chatham Health District, what the expectation is that the Chatham Health District is going to have for us in terms of contact tracing where the student has been in the building. We have to design all of that. We're waiting for clearer guidelines about how to do that.
Do we have, and I'm probably in the parent handbook, but it would seem that there are someplace, and probably the handbook would be the place to look, the guidelines for admitting a child back into school? I know there's a 24-hour rule. If somebody was sent home and they were running a temperature, if they do the testing or they find out that it's not coronavirus, is there a way, a doctor's note or something that we would require? Or could we require a doctor's note coming back in indicating that it was a strep sore throat or, you know, whatever?
If a doctor indicates it's not COVID, it's something else, then we would follow the normal procedure.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'm going to keep asking the same questions over and over again about testing, about contact, what's it called, contact tracing or whatever. And actually, I want to preface, because I'm just keep asking those questions over and over again. But I'll preface that by saying, you know, educators are right now the only industry in this state that's expected to be 100% back in four weeks. So I guess my question about that, as far as from a Board of Ed perspective, is going to be if we are actually expecting teachers to stay out when they're sick. And thank you for acknowledging that many teachers come to work sick. That, to me, would mean we would anticipate a spike in the number of subs that we're going to see. And that could potentially disrupt a lot of the staffing in our buildings.
Shortly, I'm going to present a budget to you that accounts for what I anticipate will be an increase in the number of subs and coverage we need to provide. Yes, I am very concerned that, A, there are enough out there and that, two, that that is going to come with a COVID premium.
Yeah.
Oh, we have a contract for teachers or whatever their state is.
I think there's a general feeling that there's going to be a shortage of substitute teachers as well. And the question that I asked, I don't know who, on some webinar was, maybe today the state, has the state released any information about certification? Guidelines being relaxed so that we could get qualified people to come into the school and be subs or to be teachers? And they don't have an answer for that yet.
So the question I had was what would that premium be? If we have a contract, will we pay X number of dollars per day or hourly? Have we been approached to renegotiate that specific number?
Well, Stephanie and I are going to talk about that, I think, when we get to the budget part. But what we did last year was we calculated what we spent on subs in a non-pandemic year from September to January.
Right.
And we added 25%.
I understand that, but the hourly rate isn't changing. The number of substitutes may be greater.
Correct.
But not the hourly amount. When I heard premium, I thought they were trying to, there was some question as to whether we would need to pay more to a sub.
No, we haven't crossed that bridge. It may turn into a capitalistic structure where districts are paying more. But that hasn't crossed my radar yet.
Can we go, jump back real quick to Chris's point? I just wanted to bring up testing and contact tracing briefly. I know that, and thank you for Chris for bringing that up. I know that there was nothing in the state guidelines or regulations for reopening about testing. And I know that that's not currently a part of our plan at all. But CEA released a document last week or the week before where, you know, required testing, weekly testing was, I think, one of their six requirements for reopening. And I'm just, I'm curious if you want to talk a little bit for our benefit and for everybody who's listening about why that's not a part of our reopening plan and whether you've had any conversation with our CEA rep about that?
We haven't had any conversations about any of the contract terms or any, it'd be way premature for that. And in terms of testing and a requirement for testing, I think we all watch. And even if you get a test, we know that results are, take a long time to come back. While there seem to be some type of faster tests where you get results a lot faster, I don't know that that's available anywhere other than in a hospital setting. And I don't know, Charles, you can address the more specific answers, but I just don't know that it's available.
Is the question?
Thank you, Charles.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, Tim.
Is the question here, is the school system going to provide testing and contact tracing? Because my understanding is that the community is doing it, the health district is responsible for that. Are we looking to put that onto the school? Is that what we're doing?
I'm not suggesting that we should or could. I'm just referencing that CEA put out a document last week.
Well, that's their demand list.
Yeah, and which, yeah, exactly. But in order for their teachers to feel safe, that that's one of the six, you know, things that they'd like to see happen. And so I was just hoping that Charles could talk a little bit about his understanding of why that's not currently a part of our plan or the state's recommendation.
Yeah, that, this is a huge issue. And I have spoken with Sue McDougal about this, and I did read the CEA's document. I thought it was very well crafted and thoughtful. It isn't in the Adapt Achieve State Plan. In terms of what the schools will do, we will not do contact tracing. What we will do is contact tracing within our buildings. We will know where students have been in our buildings, right? And that is, that is part of our cohort. So we will know that if a student gets ill, we'll know what bus that student was on, we'll know what students were on that bus, and we'll know what classroom that student was in, what teachers interacted with that student, and what other students interacted with them. We will absolutely turn that information over, if requested, to the Chatham Health District, and they will do the work in terms of communicating with those people and finding out, you know, what exposure or back tracing where that student had been and may have, or faculty member may have contacted. But what we don't have the capacity to do is serve as contact tracers beyond identifying places in the building that need to be cleaned and sanitized and students, in fact, who the student has interacted with. Anything beyond that, we are absolutely not able to do.
What about sharing the information?
And that was my question. Do we need to have some kind of a form that parents sign so that student data can be shared with an outside agency?
Or with other students or parents or?
Right.
Faculty or whoever.
So that's all a function of our local health district. Right? What they can request, how they can legally get it, and, you know, what we would provide, I think it's all going to be a function of what health district officials are able to do in a medical emergency. This is very complicated. And, you know, I wish there was the swab you can do and immediately know if you have it. And it seems like if that technology were available, you know, we'd be in a much better place. But yeah, now it's, hey, you know, you threw up in class, which happens all the time. Now you're going home. What are the conditions that we let you back? Is it, you have to have a negative test, you have to wait three days, you have to wait seven days, you have to wait four days? And then how we communicate and what we communicate to the Chatham Health District? Those guidelines have not been provided to us yet.
Uh-oh.
I think.
Either Charles is playing.
Charles and Sharon are frozen.
Oh, we're back. Oh, we're back.
There you're back.
Back.
I can tell you a little bit, I mean, one of the things that was said is that testing is not, not 100% accurate in terms of proving that you have coronavirus or not. It's only good, the test is only good for one week, and you would have to be retested. And the varying rates of return for information, depending on where you go, whether it's CVS or it's a medical center or hospital, could range anywhere between three or four days to seven or eight days. So testing, while it seems like a pansia to me, is not an accurate way. I think we're better off having people do the self-test in the morning and with temperatures and other guidelines in place, they determine that they're not sick and they can come to school. Or they know they've been with somebody who has had a positive test and they don't come to school. They stay and they quarantine themselves. And I think unfortunately, I get that teachers want to be safe and they want to, they want to make sure that they're not exposing themselves to illness, but I don't think testing is necessarily the way that is going to prove that they're going to be safe, unfortunately.
Can I follow up that question with another question? I know in the information you put out about the district level that in the event that, in the event that a child goes home sick and they later test positive for COVID, that you're saying in this document that the decision about what will happen for school closure or for quarantining, dealing with the rest of that, the children in that classroom and the teacher, that that will depend on advice from the Chatham Health District. Do you think that advice about what would happen in that kind of an event will come before school opens? Or is that something that will be a case-by-case scenario? I think our family is a benefit from knowing ahead of time before the school year starts, before they send their children back. What's the plan in case somebody does test positive in their child's classroom?
Without question, one of the key pieces of information that we do not have available yet is everything that talks about that. How long do we keep kids out? How do we respond? If a student is cohorting, do we just keep that cohort home for 14 days? Do we close just a building? Do we close the whole district? I mean, there are so many layers on that that we don't know yet because we haven't received this guidance from the Department of Public Health that tells us what we need to do, what we need to require, how we need to respond in the event of either a positive test or just a sick student, right? This is, this is a huge issue, folks. I'm not even going to sugarcoat it, that we need the Department of Public Health at the state level to provide us the guidelines.
Yes.
That will inform our decision-making. That can't be a decision that Charles Britton or Ryan Gertner makes. It needs to be a decision that is informed by the people with the credentials to tell us what to do, and we haven't gotten it yet. You're probably sensing some frustration in my voice. It exists in my heart.
Thank you for that. And are we anticipating, hopefully, that that information will come at some point in August?
That's what they said yesterday on the webinar.
Right.
So we just have to wait. Of course, we could call the governor's office and we could all lobby for that information to be given sooner rather than later, but.
Let's know how that works.
I know.
And in fairness, I think they're really struggling with it, too.
They are, yeah. I think if the answer existed right now, it would be out there. And this is like the building the airplane while you're flying the airplane scenario. You're trying to put it all together and you're doing the best.
Feels like.
A lot of these are unanswerables, and we'll keep spinning around on them, but they're unanswerables until we get that more advanced guidance.
Yeah.
Just to add one more thing of concern that I have, when a child does appear sick and they do have to go home, they either have to have a negative test result or a doctor's note sending them back. My child's pediatrician is still not seeing sick kids. They are not. They're only seeing well visits. And not only are they only seeing well visits, they're only seeing certain age well visits that require vaccinations. So if I had a sick child, and actually I had a sick child a few weeks ago, it wound up being cat scratch fever, I had to do a telehealth. How is a doctor going to clear somebody saying they don't have COVID over telehealth? So I have worries about that, too. And just this constant cycle of children with potential exposure, having to quarantine for extended periods of time. I know, I know it's not your fault, Charles. Please don't think I'm putting this on you at all. It's just another layer of frustration, I feel, with the whole process.
Yeah, this is a huge issue. I know that, you know, I've spoken at length with Russ Malmed, I've spoken with Dawn Davis, I've spoken with Dave Opazinski, and all of our conversations seem to come back to this, right? We're at the crux of it right now. This is the issue. And I don't know what to tell you, except, you know, we got to wait and see what those guidelines are. And once we, even when we get them, we have to study them very carefully and really deepen our understanding of exactly what they're asking us to do, because, hey, that is what is going to keep us safe and healthy, right? I mean.
Well, I would say that you have, in the document that I'm looking at right now, particularly where it says what counts as close contact, steps to take, isolation, you know, you've covered all the scenarios of possible infection. And what we, and we know the risks, and we just have to wait for the information to come. And I think parents and teachers have to be patient, as we would do, to get the information so that we can address this in a more concise way. But I think you've covered the potential process of identifying a student or isolating a student, removing him, what, how he comes back, how she comes back. So I think we have a process, but we just don't have the other key. You know, we've got the, we've got part of it. So I think patience is really going to play an important role here. And none of us are doctors or epidemiologists, so we just have to be patient for the Department of Health.
Charles, is there anything around, and I haven't seen this yet, around communication to families about just reinforcing that if they've been to hotspot areas, that they should quarantine for two weeks prior to enrolling in school?
Oh, boy. So is there ever? I put out an email to our faculty and staff gently reminding them that if they're traveling to a hotspot, be home by August 8th, because that's 14 days before convocation. And otherwise, don't go, because I like our low infection rates in Connecticut, right? I did put that out to our faculty and staff. That will go out to our families, too. A gentle reminder, you know, these are the states, the 36, whatever it's up to, and Puerto Rico, I just heard was added. You know, I know that this is going to ruin people's vacations, and I'm very sorry about that, but it's time to sacrifice. I canceled my trip to California. Don't go to Myrtle Beach this summer. I know it stinks. It'll still be there next year. I can't force people not to go. If they do go, my expectation is going to be that they're honest and tell us they went and that they quarantined for 14 days before coming to work or school.
The governor has now issued a statement, an executive order, I believe, that anybody coming into Bradley that's flying, I don't know about traveling by car, but anybody that's coming into Bradley is going to have to fill out a form of where they've been and they're going to have to self-quarantine, whether you're a Connecticut state resident or you're one of the lucky people from 36 states that have higher rates of infection. It's going to be a form, and there's a fine, and there's all kinds of consequences if you don't. So, you know, I think we're very serious about keeping the infection rate low in the state.
That's true. All right, let me take us back to our table of contents. We covered health reporting practices. The next section there is social distancing. And again, this, there are some common elements to it. It will look different classroom by classroom. In the district, the information, I sort of did some before and after photos, and we're still developing that. But, you know, people can take a look. We have set up the classrooms now. If your teachers are interested, you'll get in touch with your principal and you can come on in and see what it looks like. We have desks separated six feet on all sides from center of chair to center of chair and spread out all around the room. So they're in straight rows. Students won't be working in small groups or facing each other. We're straight back to the 1950s. It is not developmentally the best way to teach a kindergarten classroom. It stinks, but that's what we need to do to spread our students out. So you can get some pictures there. And of course, those classrooms that can't accommodate social distancing, we're going to repurpose other spaces like libraries, cafeterias, gyms, art rooms that are big enough. But students are going to be co-horted and social distanced and in masks until this is over. Okay, I'll take us back to our table of contents. Next section's base covering masks and shields. Again, the big information there is that students will be required, and we're looking at a policy tonight that unless you have a medical reason, you're going to need to wear a mask. So the information I put there are some of the differences between, you know, cloth masks like mine and N95 and KN95 and face shields. We are going to provide those if teachers and students request them. We are also going to allow students to bring them. I have a feeling face masks next year are going to be a new fashion trend, and people are going to have different ones with smiley faces or whatever else on them. That is probably going to be what we're looking at, but we are going to enforce this. And I hope it doesn't come to the point where, you know, we're taking disciplinary action against students who don't wear them, but the expectation is that unless you have a medical reason, you're going to wear the mask for the duration of the day. The building principals, to their credit, you know, they're coming up with developmentally appropriate ways to articulate that expectation. Yeah, I think, you know, Jessica's already talking to her parents about it. This is going to be very much a challenge with our young little kid, younger students, but we're going to figure this out. Jessica's also attending some webinars and reaching out to our daycare centers who have been doing this and figuring out from their experience what we can do to be successful with that. Again, social distancing, face masks, and cohorting, it is not going to be great. There are going to be challenges with it, but it's what we have to do if we all want to be back to school in person.
So let me ask the question then. Suppose you get somebody in school, probably a younger grade, that refuses to, they wear it in, but then they take it off, they say, I'm not putting it back on. What is their next step?
Parents. Yeah, parents. You know, we've got to look at it, you know, we're going to do this in a humane way. Our principals are very talented disciplinarians, I'll put it in that term. They know how to communicate with students, implore them, appeal to their better angels, do everything we can to get them to comply. And they're also ready to take action to keep people safe, up to and including removing students from school.
Okay, I think that should be part of that expectation that you talk to with parents. This is what's going to happen if this goes down this path. Needs to be very clearly spelled out.
Yep. And we have very talented counselors who can also communicate those expectations to parents and implore parents to get on our side and help us with this when necessary.
Dave, just so you know, we are going to rework the mask policy because the policy that we were given from CAE was not very clear. It did not have consequences or a plan to get kids to wear the mask or to be removed from school. So we're going to rework that policy. It's on a second reading, but we're going to take it back to the policy committee.
Okay. Okay. So back to our table of contents, before and after-school programs, clubs and activities. We're going to consider, well, let me put athletics aside. Chris Serra is work, our athletic director, is in close touch with the CIAC. No decisions have been made yet. We are seeing a lot of, you know, Ivy League, now MAC Conference, the Little East Conference went down, lots of the colleges' conferences are announcing that fall sports won't happen. CIAC hasn't made a decision yet. We're going to wait and see where we end up with high school athletics. As far as clubs and activities, we're going to consider those on a case-by-case basis. Those clubs and activities that can meet and No decisions have been made yet. We are seeing a lot of, you know, Ivy League, now MAC Conference, the Little East Conference went down. Lots of the colleges' conferences are announcing that fall sports won't happen. CIAC hasn't made a decision yet. We're gonna wait and see where we end up with high school athletics. As far as clubs and activities, we're gonna consider those on a case-by-case basis. Those clubs and activities that can meet and do their business by Zoom or Google Meet, they will be allowed to do that. Those clubs and activities that can meet, need to meet in person and can do it in a socially distanced, safe way, we'll consider those on a case-by-case basis and default towards allowing it. Those clubs and activities, I don't think there is one, but say a rugby club that wanted to have a rugby game that couldn't do it in a remote way or a socially distanced way won't be allowed. So we're gonna, we're not having a sort of one-size-fits-all, no clubs or activities. We're gonna consider them on a case-by-case basis for sort of establishing a criterion, criteria by which they would be permitted. As far as after-school activities, again, we're not saying a carte blanche, no. We're gonna consider those on a case-by-case basis. Our preference this year is to clear the buildings as completely as possible in the evening hours so that our custodians can clean and sanitize. So unfortunately, we're gonna be saying no to more community-based activities that wanna use the facilities than we might normally say no to. So I hope that those community organizations that have used our buildings in the past will be flexible and understand it's only short-term until this is all over. But we do need to keep the buildings as clear as possible so our custodians can do their work in the evenings.
Charles, I asked this last week, but could you just, in this section, as you're working it and finishing up with the details, can you separate out general after-school programs from our after-school care that's offered in the elementary schools so that families who are seeing this understand that after-school programs will continue to run?
Yep. And I, even as early as yesterday, I am collaborating and in close touch with Candice from the YMCA and Mary Pott from KidsBlast. We're, we're working out the logistics for those. Our goal is gonna be to have three sites. One before and after care at Valley View, one before and after care at Gildersleeve, one before and after care at Brownstone, so that we can cohort the students and not have to transport students between the buildings. But we're still working on those details. We, I mean, we have a lot to consider in terms of staffing and the various logistics.
Thanks.
All right. So, so back to our table of contents. The last two I can kinda cover together, I think, is Special Education and English Language Learners and Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health. I believe Dawn's on with us if she wants to, you know, answer any of your questions. But the, the, long and the short of it is, in the area of special education and English language learners, we will meet all of our obligations to provide some special needs services, the implement the appropriate accommodations and modifications, meet expectations associated with FAP and the least restricted environment, and satisfy all of the requirements needed to service English language learners. If we can't make those accommodations and modifications because a student is in either the distance learning program that they choose to be in, or we move to the hybrid or distance learning program, we are prepared to, as best we can, do those things the way we did in the spring and/or potentially, if necessary, go back to PPT or 504 and reconsider the accommodations and modifications. And I see Dawn is on there. Dawn, did you wanna add anything to that? Because that is really important stuff, what I just said.
The primary thing to add in is we're gonna continue where we left off in the spring. And for some of our students from summer learning as well, our students that are, whose families are electing to keep them home for a period of time still, will continue with distance learning and supporting their IEP to the greatest extent possible. Same thing with 504 accommodations. And then as kids are coming back into school, you know, the first thing we recognize is that they are, they are all students. So we wanna get them acclimated to school, learning how to use masks, all of the things that, that we're all going to be learning. But then in addition to that, working quickly to get baseline benchmarks of where the students are right now, and then picking up and running with their IEPs or accommodation plans or whatever supports, or, or our EL instruction, too, for our English learners. So we're just going to continue to move in, you know, getting everybody back into district as much as possible and working on those goals and objectives. Anybody have any questions?
And then Dawn, stick around. So for the, the Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health, that is still very much in development. We're, we're working with, the curriculum work we're gonna be doing with our mental health team is gonna involve some universal screens with students, some communications with parents, building out the new program at Brownstone that we have in mind. The state is offering some, what's called ruler training. That's the Social and Emotional Learning Program out of the Yale Center. So we have a lot of moving pieces in, in the area of Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health that will build upon what I think is already a pretty solid program of support that we provide students. But this is an area that, that is gonna be a focus of the work we do this, this August.
Charles, if I might also add, the very timely, appropriately timely addition of Mari Rightington as a consultant to this, to the district to help us with getting our elementary therapeutic day program up and running, the Bridges Program, and also developing our tier two, one, two, and three supports for students socially, emotionally, K through six, the hiring of our full-time BCBA in district, and all of the great things that we had going before we even knew that COVID was coming down the pipe are all being streamlined now to make sure that we support student reentry in the socially emotional needs that are, we expect to be quite different. We've been working very closely with Mari ever since we shut down in planning and looking at our service delivery. And she's been doing a wonderful job working with myself, my fellow administrators, and several of our staff members. So we're excited about that, and we know we have a big challenge ahead of us. But I think we've got a lot of good resources and good people in the right places. Thank you.
I wanna add that I'm concerned about teachers coming back and feeling valued. And I know there's a lot of demands, and some of them we'll be able to address, and some of them we'll have to negotiate. But I'm hoping that during the days of PD and some training when we are doing, when we have staff all together, that we'll incorporate some, some fun activities. I know last year, Charles, you did an amazing, fun day. Instead of a PD, sit and learn something new or be, you know, reinforce what you already know. You had scheduled some activities which brought people together and had conversations. And I'd just like the teachers and staff to know that their mental health and their social emotional being is just as important because their anxiety levels being high will only add distress to the high anxiety levels of the kids coming back as well. So I hope that there's gonna be some interesting activities during the PD time, so we can address that as well.
I'm really, yeah, I'm really glad you said that. Dawn and I had that exact conversation about 72 hours ago. So go ahead.
Great minds go in the same circle. So what can I say?
I was working with some of my fellow administrators with Mari Rightington, and we're talking about the, she, she originally had planned to use one of our opening PD, PD days to work with the whole district around her, you know, her supports and her goals. And originally, it was all gonna be about supporting students. But like I said, tier one, two, and three supports for behavioral, social, emotional needs in the classroom. But we've already revised that to make sure that the beginning, welcoming back with Mari in her presentation, is really focused on taking care of ourselves and taking stock of where we are and what we need as adults in this system, in the Portland Public Schools, and how to address that moving forward. Because if that's not in place solidly, we're not any good to our students or our community.
So, thank you. Yep, thank you for that.
Okay, so, so there it is in a nutshell. Of course, each of these sections, again, the site is still under construction. I'm planning on spending a lot of time tomorrow updating it and formatting it, seeing if I could put those links for the building level. And I do wanna make it a little prettier so that it's not all just kind of black and white grayscale. We'll, we'll, we'll do as much as we can and have it, you know, aesthetically appealing and rich with information without overwhelming people at the same time. And then also providing the links to videos and alternate languages. But our goal, again, is to release this Thursday morning and follow it up with the first Zoom Hall Town Meeting with Kate and I Thursday evening at 6:00. And I hope you'll join us for that and at least listen in or ask questions. And, and away we go. So one last piece of this, and I'm glad Sharon is here. It's almost decision time, right? So I'm just kinda, again, seeding the clouds with everybody. Here is my, my suggested timeline. And I shared this with the reopening committee and the principals this morning. And I wanna get your feedback on it because it's, it's almost August, and we gotta make some decisions here. I'm going to develop a survey to send out to parents on Friday, August 7th, right? That survey is gonna largely ask the same questions that we asked in July, but with one very important difference, the option of uncertain is going to be removed. So on August 7th, we're gonna communicate to our parents, are you intending to return for in-person learning? Or would you like to participate in the distance learning program? And we've gotta get a commitment. Of course, we'll explain that if you choose one, you know, there will be ladders back and forth between those. But we need that information because we have to finish our schedules and design the programs for the distance learning and the in-person learning. As part of our discussion at the reopening committee meeting, we think it's fair that if we ask parents to make that decision, they're making that decision fully armed with the information as to whether we're opening in everybody in person or a hybrid. And now that, as of 4:00 yesterday, although I haven't seen the executive order or the legislative action, we believe that we have the local flexibility to choose whether we open in-person or hybrid, right? So what I would suggest is that, and Sharon's here, maybe we need to talk about another meeting. I'm sorry, I know we're getting very close this summer. We're doing this a lot. But I would like to have a initial decision about whether we open fully or open in hybrid so that when we ask that very important questions to parents on Friday, August 7th, they know what they're, they're committing to in terms of in-person learning. So thoughts about that? And, you know, again, what I think that would be would be some reflection from this conversation, some continued feedback, another opportunity for the reopening committee to get together and talk about this, and maybe me bringing a recommendation to this Board of Education sometime next week, and a vote to either open in-person or open in hybrid.
Well, open in hybrid includes opening in-person. Is that?
Correct. The hybrid model would have our students in a five-day week.
Right. I just said, you sounded like one meant no in-person, and that's not the case.
Right.
Because hybrid is the combination of in-person and out. Right. I mean, we had a meeting on the 11th of August. I just, I guess in my heart, I was hoping we could wait until that. Maybe that's too long.
We could.
The 11th, we have a meeting already set, you know, it just, and then we're gonna have a lot more information that we, you know, see where things are headed. And maybe by then, we'll get some direction from the State Department of Education or the Governor's Office on what, you know, low, moderate, and high, or low, medium, high looks like.
Charles, what is your expectation for releasing the survey on the 7th of August? How much time will you give parents to respond? And if we don't get 100% response, will administrators have to call the parents who didn't respond to get their answer?
Yes to everything.
Okay.
I'm saying, release it Friday. I'll, I'll send out the school messenger, the voicemail, the text, the email, the link to the survey, and get the, the word out in every communication vehicle I have in my arsenal. Ask parents to complete the survey by Monday at noon, August 10th. And then our secretaries are gonna be working the phones, calling every parent who doesn't respond to the survey and asking them the questions. My, my goal would be that by Friday, August 14th, we have as close to 100% responses and an understanding of what we need to do. And Friday, August 14th is, is, boy, we're, we're on the doorstep of the school year at that point. We really need that information. And it can't be uncertain anymore. We've gotta know.
So I suggest that we have a special meeting on August the 18th, and we decide. You'll have all the information, and we'll have the weekend to put together a plan of, a hybrid plan, knowing the numbers at that point, hopefully. So I suggest we have a special meeting on the 18th of August.
Is that kinda late for that decision?
Not, given the timeline of the survey and how long it's gonna take to put it all together, and also put together a learning plan for a hybrid model.
I was asking Charles that in terms of his administrative team and what they need to do. No, it's all right.
Yeah, so, so I will say this. We are aggressively moving forward starting the first week of August. And, and we are developing curriculum and plans for all three. We are going to develop, really, four approaches. We're gonna have a everybody-in-person approach, a hybrid approach, a distance learning approach, and a program for families that choose not to attend. We are, we are gonna design all four of those programs, which is why I thank you very much for appointing Eric Martin as our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology. I am putting a lot on his plate very quickly, and I'm supporting him 100% and so are the building principals. But we are gonna start getting our curriculum specialists going, engaging our teachers, awarding curriculum writing hours, and beginning the process of designing three very different programs. That, that is, that is our work in August. So that is gonna happen. We don't yet know which of those models we're gonna implement because we haven't received the guidance in terms of what the thresholds are. And we now enjoy, as of yesterday, the flexibility of choosing whether we wanna do hybrid or wanna do in-person. Although I haven't seen the executive order or the legislative action formally. I just heard a press conference.
So am I clear that your, your, your preference would be for us to hold a special meeting the first week of August to make a vote about whether to start in-person, full-time versus hybrid? Is that what you're asking for?
My, here's, here's what I, I think the consideration would be. We already have a meeting scheduled on August 10th. That's a regularly scheduled meeting.
It's the 11th, actually.
August 11th.
August 11th, excuse me. We, we, by August 11th, the survey will have gone out. I've gotta get that out on Friday, August 7th. If we met next Tuesday, a week from today, which would be, what's that, would be August 3rd?
August 4th.
August 4th, right? And we make a decision as a board about whether we are planning to open in hybrid or in-person, that the, the survey to parents would be including the knowledge that the Portland Public Schools are planning to open for the first three weeks of school in a hybrid, or open in the first three weeks of school all in-person. That might help inform parents about whether they choose distance learning or choose to send their students back. Some parents might feel more comfortable that we're opening in hybrid and choose to send their students back. It's kinda what I'm thinking.
Right. Sorry, go ahead, Dave.
I was just saying, now you're confusing me because now you're talking about just doing this for three weeks and then switching to a different plan? I didn't hear that initially.
That was part of what the press conference they talked about.
Oh, only doing it for three?
You stage in, you do.
Stage in.
Stage in.
No, not long, though. How long though?
Well, like he, I think the district would have to decide. Charles would lead us on that, I suspect.
I would think it would be more confusing than anything to go one way for three weeks and then switch.
I, I agree with you, Dave.
I want to say that I really appreciate that you want to give that information to families. I really appreciate that you want the recommendation to come to the board from the reopening committee. Those are like, I, I, and I understand the difficulty of the situation where you're, that you're in right now, where you want to be able to plan for a month from now. Like, I hear all of that so clearly. And I think I have three big concerns about the idea of voting next week on how we open. The first is that I don't, we don't have the information from the state, from the Department of Public Health, and I want that information before we make a decision. That's like, that, for me, that's bottom line. But additionally, I feel like I don't have a full understanding about how we would implement a hybrid program yet. I don't, I don't understand personally how, but what kind of a request we're making of our teachers in running a classroom that is existing both in-person and digitally at home at the same time. And so I, I want to have a much clearer picture of what that is before I make any kind of vote about how we start school. And, and lastly, I feel like the amount of change in community infection rates that could happen between the first week of August and the last week of August is so, that, it's so up in the air that I don't know how a vote next week could even matter. Three weeks from now, it could be a totally different scenario that we're looking at. So I just, so much of that feels like we'd be a lot better off waiting until we're working with some real relevant data in three weeks or.
Yeah. I like the idea of the 18th, and I know that's late.
I like the 11th myself. I, I think to go with our regular meeting, I mean, I think it, we have, and then if it comes to the 11th, frankly, and we, and like Laurel says, and we still feel like we don't know, and we still feel like there's too many unknowns, we could push it off. But I do think we have to, at some point, you know, we as a board are going to have to come down on our, and it may not be unanimous, and we get a figure of, you know, accept that everybody has what they, you hope, what they think is in the best interest of the students and the faculty and the parents in, in mind.
So let me just kind of compare. So it is possible that I send out the survey on August 7th, and in that survey say, we don't know yet which of the models we're going to do, but we're still asking you, parents, please let us know whether your intentions are to return in-person or request distance learning. That is possible.
They maybe frame it that, you know, you should, you should look as, you know, plan as if it is going to, you know, if by then, things are still looking good, and there's not been a turn for increased virus and whatnot, that you could say in that, you know, you know, we, we don't know for certain, but it looks as if we're headed towards a full open initially. Or if things turn around and they're not looking as good, you could, if we get some leadership on low, moderate, high, and what that means, we could say, you know, that it's, while no vote's been taken, it looks like it may go more towards a, a hybrid to begin with. And it's, it's just so hard to say, but I, I don't know, I like the 11th as a date.
And also to, to add on to that, you've been so clear in your communications to our district and in the information you're putting out, that there are three models. There's a full in-person, there's a hybrid, and there's a distance, and that it is very likely that our district will move through all three of them over the course of the next few months. So I think, my, my gut says that parents who are committing to sending their children back to school understand that it might be Model 1, Model 2, or Model 3, or, you know, or all three over the course of a month or two. I don't know that an answer, a firm answer about whether we're starting hybrid or starting fully in-person would necessarily change that parent's mind, that, you know, we're looking at all three models, and that, and the reality is that we will probably experience all three models.
All accurate points. I, I, I think what I'm hearing is, I'll, I'll send the survey out on the, on the 7th. We'll stick with our normal 11th meeting. Even at that meeting, I think what I'm hearing is, we may not be prepared on the 11th to make a decision yet. We're going to make the decision using the most up-to-date data. But yeah, that, I have been clear that, just like a blizzard moving up the eastern seaboard, we are going to be prepared this year to transition between models with potentially one day's notice.
So yeah, can I ask a couple of questions, just to maybe clarify the issue in my own mind? So I think that it's a given that there's going to be certain things we're not going to know until the day school is supposed to open, and that's what the infection rate is. So is the question, given current infection rates, does the board feel it's more appropriate to open under a hybrid model for whatever reason, or to go to a full reopening? Is that the question that you're looking for an answer to?
That, that's the seeding the clouds question.
Okay, so, I mean, if, granted, if there's a change in the infection rate or some other variable, then the decision would, would be different as well. But assuming certain things are as they are now, what would make sense in terms of kind of getting everybody working with the new reality? Is that kind of what you're?
That's what we're, that, that's what we're wrestling with because we heard some very interesting things that we now have the flexibility to even consider that as of 4:00 yesterday, right? Because before 4:00 yesterday, the expectation was, everybody's coming back.
Right.
After 4:00 yesterday, what I heard, and again, haven't seen it in an executive order or a legislative action, but it looks like the state is trending towards local districts and local boards of education willing, have the option of choosing hybrid over all in-person.
And is that kind of where the three weeks comes from, I think, Dave, is, you know, is this kind of a transitional? Are you looking for the board to say, should we try this as a transitional model back to a full reopen, or just do it all at once? Just tear the Band-Aid off and go back? And maybe if we wait until the 11th, it will have most of the answers. We'll be able to listen in on those town halls for the different schools. And I think I need to take a look at the open meeting requirements. I don't know that board members will be allowed to participate in those. I mean, certainly we can attend and listen to the feedback and stuff, but I think if there's more than a quorum, I, I, we gotta, I gotta sort that out a little bit more in terms of participation in those building meetings. I think it.
Oh, the town, the town hall meetings, you mean?
Right.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
I don't want to participate, but I think it's helpful for us to listen in.
Absolutely. I totally agree.
Reaction to people. We'll get a good sense as well.
I just want it clear for every, all board members, if you do, you can or you cannot, that's all. So I'll look into that and, and get some information out to everyone. So maybe if we, instead of scheduling a special meeting, we wait until the 11th, then we, and we revisit the issue, and God willing, by then we'll have some information from either Chatham Health or CDC or somebody.
God willing, yep.
As to how to make these judgments.
Yeah, this isn't easy, folks. Thank you. This is, uh, this is, this is tough.
Any other thoughts on that issue?
Just a quick question to Charles. On the town hall meetings, assuming that probably a lot of parents may not be able to make it, is your intention to somehow have a communication out to every parent before the survey, so they kind of see what's coming? Because if they get the survey, they don't know what the details are to the plan, then they're going to say, you know, take the road less travel.
Yeah, my, my goal is to, to release what you looked at tonight. We'll add information tomorrow, release it Thursday morning, have the town hall meetings, record the town hall meetings, post the town hall meetings in the plan so people can tune in and see them. And then, of course, be available to individual parents by email or telephone to answer questions that aren't answered at the town hall or weren't asked.
Some kind of a messenger blast to tell everybody that the meetings are happening or where they can find stuff?
Yeah, I, I put that message out Saturday, and the building principals are following up before the town hall meetings to remind people about them.
Okay, good. Good plan.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on. Old business, the first item is the Board of Ed Retreat. I'm going to pass on that. I don't know that there's anything else for us to discuss about that this evening. Next is policies. Appointment of designated for Superintendent of Schools. This is the second reading. Any comments, questions, issues, problems with that particular policy and regs?
The only thing we did was add the word regulation to the title of that policy. It was missing from the meeting last, last week.
Do you want to vote on these one at a time?
I think so, yeah.
I would make a motion that we pass the, which one are we on here? The appointment, oh, the, do we already do the designated superintendent? Yes, that's.
That's what we're doing right now.
That's now, right. So I would, we approve the appointment of designated superintendent for school policy number 2131.1 as a new policy and regulation.
Second.
Laurel, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Next is cybersecurity.
This policy was written with some very strange things at the top, and it's been redone, so I hope that everybody got a chance to look at it in Dropbox. The preamble or the four paragraphs that we added into the beginning of it are now correct. Charles was good enough to, to do that with Meg Wright, so the policy is exactly what we said it was, and the front of it has been corrected. So that could, that could certainly be voted on tonight. It's the second reading.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Oh, go ahead, Tim. Go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the cybersecurity policy number 3520.14, which is a revised, it's a new policy that we had a revision on and.
Right. I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anonymous. All right, next is face mask policy. If I heard correctly, that's going to go back to the policy subcommittee for a little bit more work.
That's correct.
So we don't.
We have to vote on that, or can we just go ahead and do that?
I think we can just table it, or.
Just table it, yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
It'll be back.
Policy. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the admissions placement policy 5111.
I second that.
A second by Tim. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, new business. COVID-related budget needs. Is Stephanie with us?
Oh, boy.
Let's turn my page, get a blank sheet here.
Can you guys unmute Stephanie for a moment?
Hi, Stephanie.
Hi.
All right, Stephanie, do you want to take a jump into the deep end here, or do you want me to?
Uh, if you want, if you want to start it off, I can just answer any questions.
Sure. All right, Stephanie and I sat down and spent a lot of time trying to figure out what COVID is going to cost us. The numbers that you see in front of you are in addition to the LEA budget. So we're kind of calling this a, a COVID premium, right? In complete fairness and transparency, Stephanie and I did our best. These numbers are subject to change, and Stephanie and I are, of course, going to be very, very conscious of how we're spending this year and what we're doing as of tomorrow to try to mitigate some of these potential expenses. So I kind of want to go through them one by one. I'll answer any questions about how this money would be used, and then Stephanie can answer some of the more detailed questions.
Hey, Charles? Maybe you'll say this, but are you just trying to account for some of these things so we get money back eventually? Or are these actually money we're going to have to come up with?
Well, hold that thought. It is certainly money that we're going to go after in terms of FEMA reimbursement, or I'm hoping, because I'm hearing really good sounds out of Washington DC about a second round of federal funding. But Stephanie is doing a very careful job of keeping track of what our COVID-related expenses are, so that if and when we can reapply for reimbursement from the various funding sources, we, we would be able to do that. Stephanie, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you pretty much said it all. You know, I'm tracking everything, you know, right now, you know, a good, it will come out of the LEA because we have so many unknowns. You know, we have the CARES Act fund, which is guaranteed, but other than that, FEMA, that's, you know, that's up in the air. You don't know if you're going to get reimbursed until you submit. There's certain things listed in the categories of what you can submit for, and some of our things may not qualify for that. And we have the $70,000, and that's, right now, knows what we're guaranteed. It costs way more than that.
So, so let me walk you through some of them. So the first line there that says secretaries to call parents. We have had to pay some secretaries to come in to follow up on our survey in July, and we're going to have to do that again in August, so that we have as close to 100% response rate as we can, so that we can build our schedules. And those secretaries are being compensated at, at that amount that you see there, the The next line there for the re.
The secretaries are in a full-time position?
No, we have us, most of our building secretaries are 10-month positions.
Okay, all right. I didn't understand that. Thanks.
Any other questions about secretaries? Okay, we do have a teacher, a paraprofessional, a secretary, a nurse on our reopening committee. Those individuals are, are, you know, spending a lot of time in a lot of meetings and doing a lot of follow-up communications with the constituents that they represent. So they are being, keeping track of their hours and are being compensated for their contributions to our reopening committee. So that's the $5,358 number that you see there. And I, I really look forward to thanking those folks in a, a much more meaningful way because they, they have been putting in a lot of time and doing a real heavy lift here with us this summer. Okay, so next one is our school nurse, Dabo Pazinski, has been working with us to examine our facilities, consider our health guidelines, contribute to our reopening committee, do a lot of work to help get ready to implement the health and safety protocols, even though we don't know exactly what all of them are yet. But we are paying him on a per DM basis to help us get ready to create a safe and healthy place for our students to return. And that's the $2,170 number. Okay, the next one.
Sorry, Charles, what, when it says substitutes after that, um, can you just clarify?
Yeah, I'm looking at that now, Charles. I don't know if that was meant for that line.
Yeah, that's on, I'm sorry, ignore that. That's, this is under the summer, summer writing, summer sapping, that, that's inaccurate there, so.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Get rid of that.
That's all right. Just wanted to figure out, understand.
Lined through that one for sure, that's a strikeout. All right, the next one. This is a big number, but boy, is this critically important. We pay teachers $38.29 an hour to write curriculum. We have huge amount of curriculum writing ahead of us because our teams of teachers have to now design curriculum instruction assessment, redesign their units, consider what we're going to teach, identify resources and materials, and build four programs. Program one for all in-person. Even if we're all in-person, there are lots of content areas like music and PE and, and art and career and technical education that have to completely redesign their program because their current programs are designed in a non-socially-distanced kind of way. So we have a lot of work to do to get our academic programs ready for all in-person. We have a real heavy lift to do in terms of getting our teachers ready, as Laurel was talking about, to teach both, two days a week with one group of students in person, one day off while we clean the buildings, and then two days a week in social, excuse me, remote learning. So the hybrid model requires a, a real deep study of what our. So the hybrid model requires a, a real deep study of what our curriculum are is, how we cover that so that half our students are here with us in person and half our students are learning remotely. That's another enormous program that, that we have to design. And then, of course, we have to do a lot of work in learning from what we did in the distance learning format in the spring and perfecting it, right? I said to a couple of teachers, I gave us a straight A+ for what we did in the spring. If we do in the fall exactly what we did in the spring, I give us a D. So we want to learn from what we did in the spring, improve and perfect it so that if we go to distance learning in the fall, we're better. And, and I'm comfortable, confident we'll be able to do that. And then, of course, we have another team of teachers who are going to be designing a program of distance learning for families that choose not to have their students return in person. We currently have 22,000 in the LEA budget for normal curriculum writing. We've identified another 30,000 in our, our CARES Act that we could use for it, but I'm thinking we're going to need another 50,000 on top of that to pay for the summer curriculum writing. Just to tell you how I came to that number. We have 130 teachers. If we gave each of those teachers 20 hours of curriculum writing, which is barely going to scratch the surface, at $38.29 an hour comes to $99,554. So that's sort of the ballpark that I'm talking about in terms of what we need to do with our teachers to compensate them for the time that they need to invest this August to design the various models of curriculum.
Why, didn't we add additional PD days for stuff like this to take care of it?
We, those will be used as well. A lot of those PD days, though, also have to be used for training and reviewing logistics for welcoming students back. I would say that probably two of those PD days could be allocated for the programmatic work, but at least four of them have to be for the convocation and the, the normal PD that we do, bloodborne pathogens and bullying and mandated reporter things, but also the massive amounts of training that we're going to need to do so that teachers clearly understand the logistical protocols that need to be in place to welcome our students back.
I just never knew we paid teachers to do extra work. I thought we paid them to do the job. I didn't understand that.
We've always paid curriculum, summer curriculum work. That's always.
Extra thing because it's, we don't do summer schools typically as a normal, you know, thing.
Yeah, but we've always had an expense for summer curriculum writing. That's just over and above what teachers do during the year.
I get that, I get summer 100%, but not during the regular school year. That's what their salaries are for, in my opinion.
I don't think Charles is talking about this during the school year. This is for work that will happen this summer, correct, Charles?
This, this is for work that we're going to start in two days.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is to pay for our teacher, our teachers to redesign curriculum to work for these, for three potential models for the fall and, and will happen over the next three weeks, I would imagine.
Correct.
Well, we don't know what that is yet, so they can't really start until after you make a decision, right?
They have to be fully prepared for all three models.
Yeah, all, all three models are being done concurrently so that they're ready for either of the three modes.
Yeah, right. And, and the reality, Dave, is the frustrating part about it is if we just end up in distance learning and that's all we do, the money that we spend designing the in-person and the hybrid, I don't want to call it wasted because it's good reflective activity and, and having teachers think about teaching and learning in a different way, but it won't be used. Potentially. What we, what we have to be prepared is with the program of studies and the curriculum and instruction and assessment practices in three completely different models.
So what is it that you've said won't be used?
If we ended up, if the threshold came back and we had a spike in COVID and we only, hypothetically, only did distance learning, we would still have to do the curriculum work to design the in-person and hybrid because we're preparing for something that we don't know what it's going to look like.
And it's going to change.
Correct.
It's going to fluctuate back and forth and all over the place, so.
Except we hope everybody keeps wearing their masks and stays low.
And it's a long 10 months ahead of us and this could, you know, this can and will change and the reality is that all three of these models will likely be employed at some point. And so I think that what you set aside to make sure that we have well-written curriculum to the best of our ability to meet all three of these models is the bare minimum.
Absolutely.
Right, agreed.
I'm just curious, the Connecticut Mirror reported that they had a table of expenses that were reported to the State Department of Education. It indicated that Portland had, had said originally we needed $415,000. Is that inaccurate based on what you're giving us now or?
I, I reported to them that my best guess, and I was pretty good, was $200,000, but I hadn't included the CARES Act, so I was actually saying $270,000 and that's pretty close to what Stephanie and I came up with here. So I, I don't know where 400 was, but when I filled out, yeah, when I filled out the survey, I, I anticipated we were going to need about $200,000 for COVID-related things. And I think, I think we're pretty close to that.
Could that include some of the town expenses in some way, Meg? Could that include some of the town expenses?
What do you mean by town expenses, Sharon?
The town would have for PPE or whatever. Maybe they, they got a different number or composite number or something, anyway.
They might have put the town and the, the school together and said that, that's.
Oh, maybe, maybe.
All right, so, so the next one there I want to go over is the $115,944. Again, this is, this is our guess right now. This could be higher or this could be lower. I'm anticipating that we may need two full-time equivalent teachers. Now, I have to be careful here because this doesn't mean we would potentially need to hire a new person, but I am anticipating that at the secondary level, we may need to pay teachers to teach what's called a sixth section. So in the current teacher's contract, teachers teach five courses. Those teachers would be prepared to teach the five courses in the in-person learning model. But we're also going to need an English teacher, a science teacher, a social studies teacher, a math teacher, a world language teacher, a CTE teacher, an art teacher, all the different content areas to teach students that choose to attend the distance learning program. So we may need to have to teach, pay some teachers with appropriate certification, a sixth section to teach that course. So we can either have two full-time equivalent teachers and get 10 sections or pay teachers a sixth section and get the 10 sections that way. That was a lot, I want to make sure that you understand some of that lingo there.
You're saying you need 10 additional sections?
Potentially, up to 10 additional sections. Our first hope is going to be that Kate Lawson works her scheduling magic and comes to me and says, I have an English teacher who normally teaches five in-person classes. I can collapse sections and give that English teacher four and free them up to teach one section of distance learning. I spoke with Kate this morning, that's still a moving target. If she can't do that, that might mean that we would approach that teacher and say, hey, for additional compensation, would you be willing to teach a sixth course in the distance learning form?
Can I add that that's dependent on the numbers, the firm numbers that you get on August 7?
That's, that August 7th survey is going to give us that sense.
So if a teacher in each of those areas is teaching a sixth session, the number would be less than the 115, it wouldn't be.
Sixth section, teachers are paid 20% of their salary, that's in, in the contract.
Okay.
So if a teacher teaches four in-person and one online, we're good. If a teacher teaches five in-person and one online, we need to pay them that additional 20% on top of their normal salary.
So my, my own thing, two things is that, so in theory, if there's, let's say there's one kid that, that take an English class, he's going to get a one-on-one lesson.
No, no. What that may looks like, and again, this is us maybe changing working condition discussion with the teachers association. But what that might look like would be if we do the August 7th survey and we have two freshmen, three sophomores, two juniors and five seniors who choose the distance learning, I'm making that up. We might say all 15 of those take a new course called English, distance learning, and one teacher teaches all four of those grade level students and then differentiates within that construct.
More like earlier brought up, why can't we just have them call into their normal class and participate remotely? That would eliminate this whole need for extra teachers at the high school level.
Yeah, that's, that's something we're going to have to negotiate with the teachers association. TBD.
Man, I don't know why to negotiate, it's you open up a laptop and they log in and then they just teach the normal class and the student listens in.
I don't think it's quite that simple, Dave, but.
We should be, day and age technology.
I understand that there's more to it and that particularly that it might, that there might be negotiation issues around that. I, I get that, but, but if we're already exploring those questions, looking at a hybrid model and how we're going to make that work, then it, it seems like it'd be natural to kind of consider this as part of that conversation with, with the teachers.
Yeah, that's true.
And from a budget standpoint, I'd rather have all of that news now. What we may be looking at, if it's less, great, well, I'll be very happy, but you know, God willing, it won't be more.
Right. And, and we're going to work very closely with the, the building principals who are scheduling and the Portland CEA to, to do this in a fair way that obviously minimizes the expense as much as possible. So that, that 115 is very much a moving number. That was just sort of Stephanie and I saying, hey, well, we want to get it on the radar. It's not firm number yet, but be aware that that, that might be a reality.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one, here's how Stephanie and I contemplated this. We took a look at how much we spent for subs, long-term subs coverage from September to January last year and we added 25%. The reason we're adding 25%, again, this is a moving number, is because if people are not popping to Advil and coming to work if they don't feel well, like Charles used to do, but staying home as we're directing them because they're sick, we anticipate that there will be more need for substitute teachers. And there is also the very real likelihood that some of our teachers may find themselves quarantining for 14 days because the guidelines we get say that that's what you have to do. So we do think that there's going to be an increase in the amount we have to pay for subs this year. The 25% number is just what Stephanie and I are speculating, might be lower, might be higher. Stephanie thinks it's low. I, I said, let's just run with the 25% and obviously that's a moving target.
Charles, do you?
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to ask, do we even know if there are going to be subs available and willing to work?
I have spoken with Beth Solaris, who is our source for teachers contact, and she has told me that she does have subs willing to work.
Okay.
I would also say that, and this is the unfortunate side effect of a very poor economy. I think a lot of people may be out of work and we would certainly encourage them to consider subbing.
Yeah.
And I was going to say, on the flip side, if we end up having to go all distance learning, then that number could potentially end up being a savings because we wouldn't need substitutes. So everything's a moving target until we know what's going on.
Makes sense.
Okay, the next number, administrative assistance coverage. Again, we're, we're putting that out there as, as a placeholder. We're still working with our administrative assistant group. There may be some administrative assistants who are in the high-risk categories and need to work from home. If that were the case, we still need people to answer the phone and interact with the public and help run the building. So some of our administrative assistants may be working from home, but we would need to cover the front offices with, with somebody to answer phones and, and do all of the, the many, many, many things that administrative assistants do in the office. So again, that's a placeholder, that's, that's still being worked out.
One of the things I don't see is additional nursing staff. I know that nurses will be dealing with sick children, but there will be the kid who skinned his knee when he was out on a mask break. There may be a kid who needs a, an inhaler or whatever and it, it may be that we would staff with, with less nursing degrees, you know, trained people with, with first aid and CPR and, and knowledgeable enough to be able to handle that kind of a situation. Has that been considered and do we see a need for maybe that, that kind of staffing?
I do see here we have as part of that 82,000, the certified faculty substitutes nurses are there and paraprofessional coverage. So, so we did work that number in, into that, that line there.
Okay, I wasn't sure if paraprofessionals was nursing paraprofessionals or classroom paraprofessionals, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, classroom paraprofessionals.
Just added nursing to the EFS contract, so we do get substitutes through them.
Okay.
Okay, um, the $20,000 number, again, that's, that's my best guess at this time. One of the major challenges we're going to face this year, and it is something that I'm going to include in the survey to parents, that students cannot share supplies, right? So we are going to have to purchase, if our students are going to use things, one for every child. I think of this now, one pair of scissors, one glue stick, you know. Every, we can't share these things anymore, so students need them. Additionally, there are going to need to be some changes to curriculum. For example, our entire math program is really manipulative heavy. We can't use the manipulatives anymore because the manipulatives can't be shared, so we may have to look at other math programs. Specifically, we're looking at one called ZERN and some other ones. So there is going to be an expense associated with the fact that kids can't share materials anymore. What we are going to put out in the survey is our building principals are now coming up with a list of supplies. So, hey, parents, your students would need, because we can't share these anymore, a glue stick, markers, crayons, scissors, a little eight-ounce hand sanitizer thing, et cetera. Question, would you be able to provide this to your student or will you need the school to provide it for the student? Anybody who indicates that they need the school to provide it, that's part of our responsibilities as a public education agency is to provide students with those, those resources and materials and we would do that, but of course, if families are able to provide them for their children, we would also welcome that as well. So that $20,000 number there is a moving target, but it's our best guess at what we would need to account for because we can't share.
Can you explain to me what I mean manipulative is?
Oh, boy, yeah. Any number of, you think of geometry, shapes, things.
A stack of blocks or counting or?
Legos, checkers.
So there's things that could be substituted as opposed to having.
The kids do use manipulatives to count ordinally and cardinally and, you know, there's, there's lots of, our whole math program is very workshop-based and hands-on and to be hands-on, they use the things to model.
Could improvise some of that, I'm asking.
We might be able to.
Okay, good.
Okay, the next several things, you know, we've talked about the desks we're going to build for Valley View. We've talked about the plexiglass that we need to put for the secretaries to keep them safe. We need food service carts because our lunches are going to be delivered to classrooms. We need to do an air conditioner split at Valley View because the, the new nurse's office needs to be air-conditioned office needs to be air-conditioned, and we have to equip the nursing stations with, we're building a new nursing station, I should say, at the high school, so we need to get the carts and curtains and scales and everything that we need for the nurse's station. So Stephanie did a good job here and she can talk a little bit more about kind of breaking down what we need to do in order to retrofit our facilities because of the new health protocol request.
So basically, the, the nurse's office, we have to buy air conditioning units for the ones that have the windows, so those are a lot less expensive at Valley View because of where the room is and there's no windows and it's not narrow, an outside wall. We have to actually get one of those mini splits and that's a large portion of that dollar amount. It's about $10,000 just for that mini split. The other air conditioners are about $900 for the difference of that. The carts, I've been working with John White to see what would be best for what we could use, and he found $25, you know, 160 gallon on wheels because you figure 20, 22 lunches, and that's even if everybody gets lunch in a classroom. So those would be sufficient enough because I was, I was pricing out those little rolling carts and they were over $200 and that just seemed excessive to spend for a short period of time. So he found the little rolly carts, the rolly bins, that would be sufficient enough for that. Plexiglass window at the offices, that's all mandated that we need. The desks, unfortunately, we're going to have to build. And we're still looking into duct cleaning for the HVAC ventilation because of the regulations where, you know, you have to have the clean air coming in along with the fans. And then the POS system for the food, the door food sales, that's going to be for the families that choose to work from, sorry, choose to distance learn from home that we still provide the meals for since it's reverting back to the original way of, you know, we will have sales, we have to have, because we'll have a, we have to have like a portable system to be able to charge those students and mark them off because right now it's just on a paper sheet because everybody basically is getting the free lunches. So it's going to have to be treated better and John White's getting the quotes from Heartland, our, our, our system that we use now to put those in place. It's probably like a handheld thing, which is always probably good to have in case one of the other systems goes down. So, you know, that won't be a waste per se. But yeah, we're trying to keep, you know, to the bare minimum that we can, but to still follow all the guidelines that we, we need to follow. And everybody's been doing a great job, you know, figuring out what we need.
So Stephanie, I know this is probably more a question for Carl, who isn't here, right? He's on vacation.
Yeah, he's on the Cape.
How much do we spend on duct cleaning for HVAC in a normal year?
Well, we just got a quote to finish. So last year, we, we were trying to start slow to get everybody kind of in a cycle, to get everybody done and so that we could rotate so it wasn't a big full expense all at once because it, it is costly. And we spent about $3,000 last year to do a portion of Valley View. And then to finish our Valley View this year, the quote came in at about $6,000 to finish everything off. I talked to Liz today, she was contacting about doing the middle school next, so I, I don't know how much that would be, but so you figure the size of that, it was about $9,000 total.
Wow. Is it for each of this, every one of the schools has ducts that need to be cleaned?
I don't know.
We can talk to Carl about that when he gets.
The other, the other thing that I don't see is water temperature. I don't know if we, and I know there was a one-time complaint about the water at the high school not being warm enough to have students wash their hands. Has that been considered as part of the, because there's going to be a lot of hand washing going on?
Making a note, I'll find out from Carl.
There was also some discussion, and I don't know if this would be, have anything to do with our district or not, but an issue about flushing the water systems at the different schools because of the fact that they've been out of use for so long and issues with making sure like Legionnaires concerns and that kind of stuff. Oh, okay, they had brought that up a couple of different times.
Is Charles talking?
No, it's actually Dave Kozminski. Dave, I don't know that anybody could hear your response. Sorry. Sure, he's going to unmute himself. Basically, he said it's not an issue, but he'll explain why.
Okay, thank you.
There we go. Yeah, I think the only issue that we had from stagnant water, we did because of the long stretch going into Valley View School, we used to have to flush that because that used to be one of our sample sites. We had a sample site out close to the street. So that, at the high school, the water consumption at the high school, that's, that's pretty much all year round. So that's, that's not an issue of stagnant water as far as that goes. But you get to a situation with Gildersleeve School, that, that could be an issue, but just, you know, flushing the water coming in from the street, just running the water, that, that, that's, that's going to pretty much solve that problem.
Thank you.
All right, so the last couple ones on here then are, you see, we have $7,811 in expenses for hand sanitizer, disinfectant for the building and, and disinfecting wipes that we would need. And $13,650 is what we've put out the door already for face masks, face shields, N95. Actually, we're having a little trouble with the N95s, but we're going to get them, but the other PPE that we, that we need. Stephanie, do you want to talk a little bit about CERC and how that's coming together?
Well, I just wanted to say, so the cleaning supplies, I kind of based that off of what we spent at the end of the, from March to June to get the, those buildings clean, and then I did the 25% additional. I'm, you know, because we have our normal budget of supplies that we do have, but this is kind of just like the above and beyond of what we think we'll need for that. And then, so I went through, we got an email from CERC, a state agency, and they were putting vendors together and compiling a list of all items. And so you had to put in a request to say, you know, please send me your quote of what the items will cost and they're on, you know, state contracts and all that. So they find the best pricing for you and then you submit back and say, okay, yes, I'm interested, you know, this is what I need, and you kind of give an estimate. And I sat with Dawn and Opie and everybody about, you know, the needs. And we kind, they kind of based it off of do it from September to December. But we can see, you know, as school starts, if we're going through things quicker, and they, they do have the items available and ready as if you go to, you know, any other kind of place, it's kind of limited stock. So somehow they were able, maybe because they didn't bulk or whatever the case was. So I've had to put a PO and have to deposit into CERC. They were, they got our, they got our check and they said, hopefully within the next couple of days, the items will be in and then they'll be delivered to us. So I, we acquired some through there, we acquired some stuff through school health that had some items. And then also ACES kind of had the same thing where they pulled a bunch of vendors together. So they're the ones that actually have the clear face masks for the hearing impaired children and for the, the teachers to wear that work closer to the students that, that need that. They're the only ones that have them right now, so I'm trying to get two boxes at least if I can because they're, they're almost $60 apiece for 25 masks. So, and that's really where that all come from. And then we'll see, you know, and he said it's just like a fluid thing. If we need more, as we need more, I just submit it and, and we just go from there.
So has any of that PP been received yet?
Not yet. I emailed the contact at CERC today and he said that they're waiting for the items to come in and it should be hopefully within the next couple of days. To deliver it and, and they deliver it here at Middletown, their facility.
Are those clear masks, single-use or are they reusable?
I actually asked them that in the email. I said, you know, have you tried, because I think school health had some, but they weren't great quality. So I asked them, I said, you know, have you tried them out? Are they reusable? How many times could they be reused if you clean them? Because if I'm only buying two boxes of 25 and they're not reusable, that's clearly not going to work. So I'm still waiting to hear back about that. Usually answers within a day, so.
And you said, sorry, just to clarify, you said that the, the dollar amount for cleaning supplies above and beyond what we've already budgeted is based on what we used in March through June plus 25%?
So I took what we bought in from March to June when we got an extra on top of what we normally got last year to do that deep clean and everything that they have to do and what they basically have been doing from March until June to get the schools ready. So I kind of took that number because we already budget for cleaning supplies, but this is going to be the extra, like, extra disinfectant that we have to get or, you know, we have to get a special cleaner for the placates and, you know, all, all that kind of stuff.
But that number, but that number does or doesn't take into consideration now 1,300 students plus teachers using hand sanitizer however many times a day that they might not have been normal times?
Well, but we, we already supply that to them during the year. They have hand sanitizers. I mean, granted, I'm sure they'll be using it a lot more, so it, like I said, it could change, but we already do budget $100,000 for supplies or clean, you know, custodial supplies.
Have you considered hand sanitizer stations as some of the school districts are? They're placing them at the doors, not just the personal bottle that's going to sit on everybody's desk or? How, how is the hand sanitizer going to be dispensed?
Charles, correct me if I'm wrong, that might be a Carl thing. I thought that Hilliard was going to supply for each room, the, the state, you know, the, the pump station. I, I could be wrong though.
Yes, that's, that's our goal is to have a, a hand sanitizer kind of press thing in every, in every room.
And that $7,800 would cover that?
It, it, that $7,800 is a premium on top of our already budgeted amount.
Okay, all right.
If you buy their supplies, usually they supply you with the, you know, the thing they put it in, so.
Right.
You maintain.
Okay.
Like, you know, what you put into it.
Okay, I want to go back to supplies for a minute. I want to talk about lockers, which I don't know where else to talk about them. Kids are not going to be able to use the lockers traditionally. For instance, Valley View, two kids to a locker. What are they going to do with their coats and boots and things coming in or raincoats and boots or sneakers? Where are they going to keep their supplies or their personal belongings within the classroom?
I'm sure the building principals are hearing that question and chomping at the bit to answer.
I bet they are.
You know, I, I, why don't I just answer it by, by assuring you that that is a very important detail that the principals have considered. And in some cases, the kids will be using lockers, but they will not be sharing lockers. They will not be right next to each other, opening those lockers and that, that if they're allowed to use the lockers, they will be social distanced. At Gildersleeve, they're not going to, the kids are going to be bringing their, having their stuff on their desk. So, you know, we could probably spend quite a bit of time if you'd like, the principals could answer that, but I, they've definitely thought that, that through.
Okay, yeah. Just, just wondering if we have to purchase, you know, hooks or something that used to be in classrooms of in the 1950s or 60s? I'm just wondering if we need to include something for, you know, hanging up personal belongings? I don't know.
Yeah. They might be in storage somewhere. It's a good point. That's true. We are, we are going to have 1950s looking classrooms, which kills me in every way, but.
And then it just, you may not be able to answer this, but I see you have FaceMax and the shields and the N95s. Are the, are the N95s just for certain uses, like for the medical staff or are they being handed out, you know, for, for students and teachers as well?
Those are for the nurses.
Those are for the nurses or for the, yeah, for health.
And possibly I think maybe certain teachers, right, Charles, that may work closer with kids?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the most, for the, and the difference between the N95 and our, and our normal masks is the, the, the N95 have to be fitted, like, so they, they have to do like a seal test kind of thing. So it's primarily for nurses, but there also may be some students, some teachers working with students that can't social distance, they then would have the enhanced layer of protection from the N95.
Right.
So, so there's the number, 269018. I, I expect that once Stephanie puts in the, the amounts for the duct cleaning, the fans and the point-of-sale sales, that's going to be a little closer to 280. And that, that's a big number. It's, this, none of this is, is going to be cheap. It, it is, but it's what we have to do. Now for the revenue, right? So this is, these are the expenses. There is, I am anticipating there will be revenue. So on the revenue side of the ledger, we do have the $70,000, 382 from the CARES Act. Right before this meeting, Stephanie and I had a very interesting conversation with Tom and Susan Bransfield, and we are going to try to sequence our spending to maximize the possibility of being reimbursed for those things that are reimbursable by FEMA. And Stephanie, what is the CPR office, OPR? What's the other source?
Office of OP, the state office of OPM, I think it's the CFR money. It's the other, FEMA will give 75% reimbursement and then you go to OPM for the other 25%.
So we're, we're going to work very closely with Tom and the town because the FEMA reimbursements and that latter one that Stephanie described, those are municipal, they have to go through the municipal officers. But Tom and, and Susan are very aware of that and are going to be working with us to submit for reimbursement, those things which are, are reimbursable. So that's a, a new revenue stream that isn't on this yet because we literally just had that conversation about, well, now four hours ago, but before we came into this meeting. Other revenue streams that are unknown at this point would be potentially if, if we don't have fall sports, there's a dollar amount associated with that. You know, or if the sports are changed in some way, you know, that, that could, could produce a revenue stream. If we don't run activities, there could be some revenue generated from that. And of course, the big one, the one that, that, you know, call your elected officials and please advocate for, we are hearing that a second stimulus package out of Washington to encourage schools to reopen would include some additional funding. So the, we have some known, some potential and some very much hoped-for revenue sources that, that could help us offset that, what I'm speculating will be about $280,000 COVID tax. Thank you for that list.
Wow. Now I know what keeps Stephanie and you up at night. The other stuff keeps me up at night, but this is really not surprising. And I think you probably have loballed it in some ways. I mean, you're, it's an honest assessment of where we are. I'd like to add another 25% to it and just say, we're probably going to need it in the end, but thank you.
So Stephanie, why don't you talk now about our first step in paying this bill?
Which one? Which step?
The budget freeze.
So I, I thought it was crazy thinking about it and even when Charles and I were talking about it, but then I reached out to other districts and three-quarters of the ones that responded all said they put budget freezes as of July 2nd, basically, and only allow, because they know, you know, their budgets were cut, just like ours were, and they have all these added expenses that they have to figure out, you know, if, if they don't get reimbursed for or if they don't, you know? CARES Act money was very minimal for a lot of districts. So, you know, there are a lot of extra expenses and where's the money going to come from? You know, so basically they, we look at it as, you know, memberships that we have to keep going, purchase services, obviously, that we have to continue. And any distance learning curriculum type expenses will be the ones, and obviously special education, transportation, you know, all the, all those kind of costs will be the ones that we'll have to go through. But then everything else is going to have to come as a, you know, case by case basis and a request to myself and Charles, you know, and really advocating for why you need this item. Until, you know, we get through a month or two and see what happens. And, you know, can we, you know, lessen the PPE? Can we, are we going to go hybrid? Is there going to be not as many teachers needed for the, you know, for that sixth section? You know, the where we can free up some money. But a lot of the schools got a lot of the things they needed from, from last year. So I would hope that they're in somewhat of good shape. Obviously, the supplies needed for the kids will be a priority for whatever's left over that the families can't provide. But I think we just have to take a real careful look at what we're actually spending money on now.
In light of that, can we ask the PTOs to do some supplies for classrooms or for students? Is that a, is that a possibility for funding some of the supplies?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, I, you know, I, I heard from the building principals today that, that the PTOs are, are ready to engage and, and help as much as we can, particularly with things like supplies. But I just want to go back to, to make sure everybody's aware. Every district I've ever worked in besides Portland, I've experienced a budget freezing. And, and it's not fun. And, and oftentimes, this is why principals run out early in the summer and try to buy everything because they know it's coming. But I think it's prudent right now for us to communicate to our, our department heads and our principals that we're, we're implementing a budget freeze and that we're going to look at what you must have, like electricity, to run your buildings. But we're going to prioritize those things that are important and we need, but aren't in that category of must have. And, and Stephanie and I are going to, going to scrutinize every nickel that goes out the door as of tomorrow when we implement the budget freeze and only buy those most essential things until we have a clearer sense of where the dust is.
Yep. Makes sense. Can I ask, is there any indication or, or issue in terms of the transportation contract? Are you expecting to hear about any changes in, in that as of right now?
Stephanie, have you heard anything about that?
No.
You know, I think at our last meeting, we were hoping, I don't know if we had a number, if we knew what the percentage was. Were we waiting for an answer on that? Does anybody else recall that?
I'm talking about the coming year's contract, not last year's.
Oh, not last year's?
It would be a separate, that's a separate question. I, I'm, the question was whether the bus company was saying that it's going to be more expensive. So we, we need to renegotiate what your charges are going to be for the coming school year. That's what I was referring to.
Are, are we in the last year of the, the present contract? Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
So I heard this, this afternoon on the, on the CAE webinar with, with Commissioner Cardona that the state is in the process, I believe, of purchasing a bunch of Chromebooks and distributing them to districts that need them. And I'm just wondering, so they, they ended kind of abruptly and didn't get to all the questions. And one of my questions is whether districts who have been spending money that wasn't initially budgeted to buy Chromebooks for their students, if there's any kind of reimbursement or additional funding from, through that program that they're currently working on that we might want to look into or take advantage of?
Are you talking about the Dalio Foundation or are you talking about state revenue?
You know what, I don't know the answer to that. I just know that during the webinar today, Cardona was talking about how they are in the process of distributing Chromebooks.
I, I didn't hear Chromebook, I read an article that said they were, this governor Lamont was going to release money that would be used for, for computers. Maybe it was laptops and Chromebooks as well, but the article in the paper said computers.
No, there was a foundation that bought $60,000.
That's probably.
Yeah, but that was something different than this, this is a.
Well, the Dalio Foundation is back, but they're not working with the state because that fell apart. And now he's looking to work with individual school districts to provide monies. That was the, the latest that I heard. I didn't hear where the funding came from for the Chromebooks that were purchased.
I wouldn't either.
Money that came prior to the, the last couple of weeks. I think they had already purchased them with some of the money from the state care fund or from the coronavirus fund.
Well, it may be a dead end, but it, that was the first that I had heard about it. And so it just, I thought it might be something worth looking into.
I can't imagine that Stephanie is leaving any stone unturned.
I'm sure that's true.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, next. We have a matter for executive session, the Portland Association of School Administrators Contract Extension. We discussed an executive session or possible action afterwards. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make the motion to go into executive session and invite Dr. Britton for the purpose of discussing the Portland Association of School Administrators Contract Extension.
Please second it.
All right, all in favor?
The time is 9:27.
All right.
See you in the room.
Thank you.
Bye.
See you there.